To order. And um. We always like to start with the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody would mute and you can kind of recite. Along with me, I will begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. So welcome, everybody, to the Neshoba Regional School Committee meeting. I'm excited to introduce to you our special guest tonight. First hour of our meeting will be under her leadership. I I'll point your attention toward. This the box on the screen where Tracy Novick is sitting. She is a member or representative from. Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And she's going to escort us through. Uh what I consider to be a really important. Training on budget development for regional schools. It's something that at our workshop, we all expressed interest. In receiving the training on and tonight is the night. So. Please feel free to um take notes as you see fit, anything that you think is important. That you want to perhaps discuss at the end. I think that Tracey is going to try to leave a little bit of time. In the last fifteen minutes or so for us to ask questions or to have. A brief discussion on the materials that she presented. Um so Tracy, I'm going to turn it over to you. Welcome, and we're looking forward to it.
Excellent. Um and yeah, and by all means, um you know, I am accustomed to um. Being interrupted too, so that if there are questions as we go, if people want to ask um things. Because we're going to go from um, you know, one thing to another as as things um come through. So um. What I'm what I'm hoping to kind of ground you in here is um. Some of the the kind of um. The what it is that goes into putting your budget together, sort of how does how does your, what are the building blocks of your budget? Where do those numbers actually come from? Um which I think are some of the some things that are maybe a little bit behind the curtain for many school committee members. Um to give you some insight into um chapter seventy-eight and then effectively then how that influences. Um your required local contributions, which of course is the numbers that the towns see, and then also the the numbers over and above that. So parts of this you may be familiar with, particularly if you've been through charting the course. Um but I am going to be spending a bit of time on. Really sort of grounding you first in just kind of the 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 state angle, because that then underlies everything else that happens with your budget. The first is that um we all at school committees throw around the term chapter seventy, I think, all the time. Um not everybody necessarily knows that chapter seventy is actually a reference to Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy. Which this is actually how the chapter opens. Um it it actually lays out the intent of the state. Um to do two things um to define a foundation budget and then also create a standard local funding effort for every city and town. Um and then doing so to assure a fair and adequate minimum for pupil student funding for public schools in Massachusetts. As some of you may be aware, Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy came about as a result. Um of the McDuffie lawsuit against the state, which was settled back in nineteen ninety-three. Which effectively then said to the state, okay, look, you need to figure out a way to make a standard across the state in terms of how we fund schools. So um what does that end up meaning? Well, it means that when we use the shorthand. Of chapter seventy, we're simply talking about state funding for education. And it is general funding for education, as I think most of you are aware. There are particular lines that you get of various other kinds of things. Um but the if we're talking about chapter seventy-eight, it is general use aid. Um for K through twelve public education. So when the state is putting together every year its budget. Um and effectively, this this particular piece falls under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um the the creation of the question of. Um how are schools going to be funded starts with the creation of a foundation budget. Um and back when um the foundation budget was created, back when the the Massachusetts General Law was was put together. Um the foundation budget was created by the idea of there being particular things. That every student needs to have in order to have an education. Um and so each of these categories that you see listed here. Starting with administration, running obviously through teachers, but then also things like professional development, instructional materials. Um and even employee benefits, then come together to make a foundation rate. Um and so the calculation here is based on there being for every student that lives in your classroom. There's a particular dollar amount that um the state says is needed. In order to assure ensure that each of these things is then provided for each of those students that you have. That those um categories come together for what's called the base foundation rate. Um and for this particular fiscal year, these are the numbers that the state is using FY twenty-two. Um again, this is a base foundation rate. This is. Put together to sort of build that fair and adequate minimum for pupil funding. The state, though, doesn't stop stop there because part of the conversation that had happened. When chapter seventy was um being created. Was a recognition that not every student has the same amount of need. Um and so. Even as you talk about sort of every kindergartner, every fifth grader. Um students who are English learners, the additional assistance. Students who are low-income students have particular additional needs. And so the foundation budget actually recognizes that by adding an additional increment on top. For each of the students that you have that's recognized um in these categories. So this is the first time that I'm going to say something that I will repeat multiple times tonight. Um this English learner increment, um these numbers are changing. Now, every piece of the foundation budget changes year to year um due to inflation. Um but these also are changing as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. Um there was a recognition that we were effectively underfunding. Um the English learner increment in terms of meeting the actual needs of students who are learning English. And part of what's going to be going on with this one is that the grades nine through twelve eventually will actually become the increment that is the largest. Um in recognition of there needing to be additional support for students that we have for that effectively less smaller period of time. Um the other increment that's included in the foundation budget is the low-income increment. And this is a recognition, um first, that students who are low-income have additional need that need to be met by the school. But secondly, as you may be noticing here, um each of these twelve categories. Is a based on the percentage of students in a district that are considered low-income. Um and if you note, it goes particularly progressively higher at the end. Um this, there's a significant amount of research that demonstrates that when school districts have a higher concentration of students who are in poverty. Um there is this sort of um compounding effect. And that hits the district, um and the state's recognizing that by doing this. This is the second part of a second category that is being um impacted by the Student Opportunity Act. These numbers um are again increasing each year, not only by inflation, but also heading towards a goal that is about five years out at this point. And when it is fully implemented, the um category twelve, which is the highest concentration of poverty. Will be um equal to the middle school rate in the base foundation rate. So effectively, the foundation budget then will recognize um an additional one hundred percent per pupil. Um for students that are in that are in poverty in the highest concentration poverty districts. Now, special education is not an increment. Um I always pull it out and do it separately because I think it's important to recognize. That special education, um while it obviously is a real need in our districts. The state does not recognize based on actual students. So everything that we've talked about up until now. Um you have actual kindergartners, you have actual English learners, you have the actual numbers of low-income students. Um special education is a flat enrollment. So um the percentage um for out-of-district students. That is calculated for each district is one percent. And in the current fiscal year, the in-district special education, um it is three point eight three percent. For um K through twelve districts. Um it's different for regional vote tax. Um important to note, the in-district special education rate is again another part of the um foundation budget that is being changed by the Student Opportunity Act. This eventually will become four percent and it'll be five percent for regional vote tax. So when you look at these nice high numbers, the thing to consider is that. This is not based on actual enrollment for the number of students that are on IEPs. It is an assumed rate. Um so as much as these numbers are significantly larger than anything you've seen so far, just keep that in mind. So if we take those pieces, um and we multiply them out. Um by the number of students that you have, right, the number of kindergartners you have, the number of first graders you have, and all the way through in terms of your. Enrollment. You take your base foundation enrollments. You're going to do the same thing with the increments above the base, your English learners. And also the low-income students, again, actual count of students in your district for each of those. Um added to that on top is the special education percentage um of enrollment, and that then is what actually gives you your foundation budget. Um for each year. So I try not to scare people too early on with spreadsheets, but. The state does create this spreadsheet, which is where all of those numbers that I just gave you um are seen. Um this is just a screenshot of it. Everything here comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is the FY twenty-two one from Neshoba Regional. Um couple of things you'll notice is that you don't run half-day kindergarten. So obviously, there's a line of zeros there. You don't have a vocational program. There's a line of zeros there. But you can see how, as you go down and across. You have an actual count of students. Um that's actually last year's October one count. Um and then the categories that are that each um student is divided up into, multiplied out by the rate. And then you end up with a total over there in the bottom right-hand corner. Uh do you just want to call your attention to over here where it's lined fifteen low-income group? You're in category twelve. Um that's the percentage that that's done by the percentage of students you have that are low-income. Um so that then obviously determines the rate um for the Neshoba Regional School District in terms of students in poverty.
Tracy, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you go back one quick slide?
Absolutely.
For the low income, you said that we're in which category?
Two. So over here on the left-hand side, um there's the numbers down on the left-hand column, and the number fifteen is low-income group. So you're in group two. And so then.
That means that's like relatively low level of low-income students.
Yes. So I mean, looking at, you've got three hundred and forty-one students. So in in column three over here on the right-hand side, that's your. Number of students that are low-income. So you have three hundred and forty-four that were recognized on October one. Out of a student enrollment of three thousand one hundred um thirty-eight. So you're what, a little bit above ten percent? Um and so that that would determine which of the low-income groups you're in. That help?
Miss um. Madam, madam chair, can I pipe in with the question?
Jump, jump right in. Yep.
Uh so one's a little administrative. Where could we find this deck? Is this something we could access after this meeting?
I'd be happy to send you. Um I'd be happy to send the slideshow to you. Yes.
Okay. Um the second thing is, did you fill out this spreadsheet or is this something I could download myself from Desi?
The spreadsheet that's currently on the screen is um posted in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Yep. If you go to Desi's website. And go to go to um fund the funding section, then go to chapter seventy. The um final FY twenty-two spreadsheet, full spreadsheet, is the one that you'd want to download.
Okay.
Not the last time you'll see one of these. So all of those are actually right in that same spreadsheet. I see Michael has a hand, too.
Uh yes, thank you. Um Tracy, I just want to get the terminology correct. The thirty roughly thirty-five million that we're seeing here, that's the foundational budget. That that is what the state is telling us is the minimum we will need to fund our the kids in our district, correct?
Yes, for FY twenty-two. Yep. So that's your fair and adequate minimum to quote chapter seventy. Absolutely.
But that entire number, the burden is on us to fund that.
No, because we haven't gotten to the second part of the calculation, which is who's going to come up with your thirty-four million dollars. You have anticipated the next part. Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry, one one quick question, Tracy. So I'm on the Dusty website. Where do I go to find this?
So if you go to, I think it's uh funding and something else, funding and enrollment, something like that is the top category of the dropdown menu.
Um. Okay, I don't want to.
Yeah, we have to click. There's like those little lines over on the sign that actually you have to click now to get a menu. It doesn't actually run across the top.
Well, Rich, maybe we'll look for it later. Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna say, I and I can easily also just send it to you, honestly. Um I have it even open on my screen in the background right now. So this is just a simplified version of that same math, right? How many students are in pre-K? What's your per-pupil um rate for the foundation rate? Here's the total for preschool and then down the lines. Um two notes at the bottom. Anything that was zero, I actually just dropped. So that's why you don't see, for example, half-day K. Um and then the rose and italics are the rates over the minimum. Um and I always say that because I'm always afraid that someone's going to try to um add the entire enrollment column. And it does not total because all of the students that are in. Special education in district, special education out of district, EL and low-income. Um already are counted in their grade uh above. Um so don't don't try to do that math. It's not that the math is wrong. It's that they already got counted once. But that's again getting you to this thirty-four million. Again, that's a fair and adequate minimum. Um that chapter seventy says that um is is for your district for FY twenty-two. Now, when I talk about foundation budgets, particularly now. That we're seeing um changes to that, not just the not just the increases that we've seen year over year for a number of years that actually are just um inflationary. A couple of things that I try to make sure districts are keeping an eye on or are familiar with is what is your enrollment trend look like, right? Because the uh setting aside the Student Opportunity Act changes. The two ways that your foundation budget changes from one year to the next is the state's inflation rate. Um which is not the inflation rate that we see in the headlines. It's actually based on state and local spending of the previous year. Um it tends, it's a little bit up and down, but I mean, this past year it was one point four three percent, so not necessarily going to see a massive increase there. Um should be better this coming year, by the way. But then the other thing is, which direction is your enrollment headed in? And I I'm sure that I'm not sharing numbers here with you that you haven't seen before. You sort of have had an upswing coming out of the the nineties. Um leveled off for a bit and then potentially are heading a little bit back down, although I see you jumped up again a little bit this year. So keep in mind that flat enrollment. Honestly, is very, very common um in a lot of districts in Massachusetts, as is honestly declining enrollment for a number of districts. But that does then have it have an impact on how your foundation budget comes together. Because the number of students you have is actually specifically what gets gets funded. Um it's actually, you know, a straight count. And then, as you saw, the other thing that gets is part of this calculation. Um is the number of students that you have in particular kinds of need. So, you know, what exactly does it mean? To have, you know, English learners? Well, this is the thing that I think is actually in it's not uncommon right now in a number of districts in Massachusetts, which is. We have a lot of districts that just have usually not had students who are English learners. Who now are seeing English learner populations that are in the single digits. Now, it's easy, I think, that if you're, you know, if you're Chelsea or Lawrence or whatever, to dismiss that because that's not the sort of thing that that the numbers they've seen. But obviously, it's actually, it's a fairly significant change. For a district that traditionally has not had to deal with this need. Um and so, yes, that's going to be a question in terms of the foundation budget, but it's it's a question of the foundation budget because it's actually honestly a question of student need. The other thing here is that this is your number of students that are disabilities. I'm sorry, it looks like the the key got a little bit cut off here. Um which has been, uh you know, looking back over the past, um you know, twenty years or so here. The uh you've actually really had this kind of bouncing around quite a bit. You, you know, you were up in the seventeen percentiles. Um back in the early two thousands, you're back up there again, but there was a period of time during which you were close, you were down close to ten percent. Now, again, now, in this case, this is obviously not actual need being funded. But it's not an actual need that you have to meet. Um and so in terms of the decisions that you have to make in terms of your budget. It makes a lot of difference if you have ten percent of your students who are being recognized as special um as needing special services versus seventeen percent. And then finally, and this this was really one that sort of jumped off the page at me, your low-income student percentage. Now, there has been a change in count. There was a change in count in two thousand in two thousand seventeen. Um and then we've kind of had a couple of other changes. We're about to go through change number, I think, four this coming year. But um nonetheless, you know, for a district that had for a very long time. Um a low-income count that was around four or five percent. To now be looking at ten and now actually thirteen percent low-income um is a really significant change. And so, you know, again, to the question in terms of what category are you in? How far over does that shift you? Not too far over, because there's certainly a lot of districts that have significantly higher percentages. Um but it wouldn't be surprising to me if this is something that you're actually seeing starting to impact your classrooms, uh because that's that is obviously a change. I also thought it would be useful for you just to know, um your foundation budget, again, considered a fair and adequate minimum. Um because of the changes in your student enrollment, has bounced around quite a bit um in the past ten years since FY ten. Um you know, from the twenty-eight, twenty-nine percentiles, and now you're up up into thirty-four. Um and obviously, again, this is sort of, you know, a recognition of what's going on with your district in terms of enrollment, um as well as in terms of special populations. So now we get to the the where does that money come from question, right? And actually, I haven't changed this chart. It's thirty-four percent, but thirty-four million dollars. But where are you supposed to get that money from? So the first thing that I wanted to share with you is something that actually was not um written down until we did the Student Opportunity Act. Um the foundation budget for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So if we take your thirty-four million dollars. And we take all of the foundation budgets for all of the other three hundred and fifteen um school districts in Massachusetts. When the state looks at that bottom total, what the state says is, we are going to expect that local effort is going to fund fifty-nine percent of that. And the state is going to fund forty-one percent of that. So how do they actually calculate that? Well, they take two pieces of information. They take the equalized property valuation of all taxable property in all municipalities. They add all that up. And then they take all of the income from all of the State Department of Revenue filings, and they add all of that up. And then they do a little bit of decimal magic, which is that they set them equal to one another. And they set them equal to one another by multiplying one side by a decimal greater than one, what the other side by a decimal less than one. Um and they, once they have taken these two decimals. This is the only thing that they're going to walk away from this calculation with. Because what they then are going to do is they're going to take each of these decimals and they're going to apply it to every city and town in Massachusetts. Again, looking at their income wealth and their property wealth. And those are the two things that determine. How much the state thinks that each of your towns can then afford to put towards port towards their schools. So the local property valuation, um again, for each of your towns. Is multiplied by that decimal we just saw pulled out of the state calculation, which is called the uniform property percentage. And then on the income side, the all of the income that was filed from your town by by zip code. Is multiplied by the uniform income percentage. Um and then in each of those cases, what is yielded of that, those two products that comes out of that, put together. Um you have local effort from property wealth, local effort from income, together, those are um put together in a a sum called the combined effort yield. Now, I just threw a whole bunch of terminology at you. The one that I want you to walk away with is the combined effort yields. Because that's actually the calculation, again, done to every city and town on at a standard way across the entire state. Which allows us to actually say, so this is how much that that this town can afford to contribute to the public schools. And if you take that and you run it against a foundation budget. Um which is affect, again, the recognition of the needs of the district. You then start to get an idea of what exactly the comparison is between the needs of the district and the ability of the town to be able to provide for that. Um and that then allows you to be able to have sort of a more. A a more meaningful conversation about what it means in a state that has, you know. Um needs as great as, say, Holyoke and Lawrence. Um and districts that have significantly more ability to provide for their students and significantly less need in their schools. So what I've done here is I've just taken a.
Tracy, I think I think you might have a question from Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see everybody's hands. Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. All right, I have I I have lots of questions, but I'm going to narrow it down to two.
Sure.
My first question, and I only know this because a resident reached out to me. It feels like the DOE's numbers for the total enrollment in our district is different from Desi's numbers.
So who is the DOE?
Uh Department of Education?
So Desi is the Department of Education for Massachusetts. They're the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Usually when I talk about DOE, I'm talking about the federal government, and they don't have a count.
Oh, so all right. Well, the the, okay, the number I got. Okay, all right. Well, that that basically answers my question.
Now, it now, keep in mind that right now we have access to two different numbers because.
Right, okay.
What I just showed you was your FY twenty-two budget. Which is based on the count of last October, like not October that we just had two months ago, but the October before that. If you go onto the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website and pull up the profile for Neshoba Regional right now. The numbers that will show up on the screen first will be the the two thousand twenty-two count, which is the October one, two thousand twenty-two count. Which is more or less the kids that are sitting in your in your desks now. Which will be the um the count that is used for creating your FY twenty-three budget, like next year's budget.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll accept that.
I mean, and the other thing is that people want to, if people want to give me sources and ask why why numbers are different, I'm always happy to chase that down.
Um the other question is, you had me with local effort being fifty-nine percent of the foundational budget. And then you said the thing you really need to remember is the combined effort yield. Can you help me parse out the difference between those two?
Sure. So the fifty-nine percent is the state saying to everybody else. You all together are going to pick up fifty-nine percent of the entire foundation budget for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That doesn't have any any reflection on how much Stowe and Lancaster and Bolton are going to need to pick up of each of the found parts of the foundation budget. For the Neshoba Regional School District. It just means if we take all of those pieces. And then we add them up to how much Worcester's contributing and Boston's contributing and everybody else's. Together, all of those contributions are going to be fifty-nine percent of the foundation budget. And the state's chapter seventy-eight is going to be forty-one percent of the foundation budget for the whole state.
And then some will have to contribute more and some will be be able to contribute plus. Is that right?
Exactly. So which and that's really what this calculation is getting to, is it's saying, okay, so we we looked at the whole state's comparison. Now, taking those those decimals out of the state's comparison, we're now going to run that calculation for every city and town and say, okay, so given the amount of income you have in your town. And given the amount of property wealth you have in your town, how much can your town afford to contribute to your schools? And that's what the combined effort yield is. So the combined effort yield is saying, you've got so much in property taxes, you've got so much in income taxes. If we run this calculation, which is standard for every town. And we put them together, we're coming out with a number that says, okay, of that wealth that's in your town, we think you can actually afford to give this much to your schools.
Okay, all right, better.
Part of the reason I think this is important for regionals in particular to know is that I think that in in honestly, partly, this. And and honestly, partly this is because of the way even the spreadsheets are put together for the state. Because they're trying to do so many things, there's only so much they can show. It's a little bit, I think, more invisible that this calculation actually gets run for each of the towns. So I think that in many cases, people think that the contribution is purely about your enrollment. And it's not purely about your enrollment, it's also about your town's ability to contribute.
So so Tracy, just as a quick follow up, I'm sorry if I'm putting all this time, but. Is the the Combined Effort Yield from district to district. Might not necessarily be forty one percent of the foundational budget, but it should be hovering somewhere around there, a little bit more for some districts, a little bit less for others.
No, it's totally going to be different. So the Combined Effort Yield, I mean, I at some point I can pull up the spreadsheet and and we can actually walk through a bunch of them. But I'm trying to remember, you know, there's there's places like Holyoke that I think are down around maybe fifteen percent of their like. Of the the ability to contribute to the school district. Then there are districts that actually can contribute more than their founded multiple times more than their foundation budget.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. And I should say, by the way, this is easily the most confusing part of anything having to do with school finance. For a long time, people didn't actually try to even explain the minute, this is the municipal wealth calculation. To anyone, and and I actually have found that it then puts school committees in the sort of this awkward position, because. Nobody's ever explained to them where the chapter seventy number is coming from. And if all we ever do is explain to you the foundation budget, then we're only kind of explaining half the equation, we're not explaining the part that says, okay, so how much do you have to pay and how much does the state have to pay? So that's what's coming together here, so again, property wealth times the same standard standard calculation. Gives you the local effort calculation for wealth and same thing going on with the income together. The sum of that is the Combined Effort Yield. So that is, again, to sort of pull this out of chapter seventy again, that that second part of what chapter seventy says. Massachusetts law, chapter seventy says it's going to do, which is create this standard local funding effort applicable to every city and town.
Tracy, do you mind if Kirk jumps in really quick?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, please do. I think he's muted, though.
Sorry, Kirk, you're muted.
There we go. I I think you can hear me now, Tracy.
I can.
So. The FY twenty one school year, the funding that we got for chapter seventy. Is based for FY twenty two is based off of the FY twenty one October first number, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I I'm just wondering about the impact with with COVID and a large number of families across the state. Going into homeschooling. Or maybe elected to go to private school, how did that impact the formulas?
So that that was what we actually had this sort of pitched battle that was going on with the state as they were considering the twenty two budget. MASC, MASs, a number of the of the organizations together were advocating to the state that we needed. Effectively, an enrollment hold harmless and there's a part of the calculation that's held harmless, although it doesn't impact you. But what we were trying to say is like, look, we had a dip in enrollment, that's going to impact the budget, what are you going to do about it? That was rejected by both the Senate and the House, as well as the governor. So they had put in to the budget effectively sort of a pothole account. Which I want to say is forty five million dollars, it's the number currently is escaping me. And I followed up with Bill Bell at the department and about two weeks ago and said, hey, you guys had this money, what's going on with it? And they were waiting for all of the October one counts from this year to come through. So that they can compare this year's enrollment to last year's enrollment, which is where how that section of the budget was written. And then they will, in doing that comparison, determine which districts are eligible for this pothole funding. Which we're supposed to be hearing about from what Bill told me sometime in January. So, yes, it absolutely impacted school budgets and there also were schools where. They sort of skated through last year, maybe because of with Essar or maybe with something else. And then thought maybe those kids would pick back up this current year. Some places did, some places didn't. And, you know, honestly, that's a conversation that I think a number of districts are going to have to have this coming spring too, for the same reason. Yes, and Michael just found your, I think, your district profile, I think that's what that's a link to in the chat.
I can find the profile, I just can't find the spreadsheet that you filled out.
Okay, so if you what you're if what you've got up, right, so this would be if you've got the FY, if what you have is the front page of Neshoba. You're looking at the October one, two thousand twenty one student count. If you go up in the upper left hand corner of that profile page and you click one more back arrow. Those numbers should match this, because this is, again, the budget, your budget for this year is based on last year's October one count, not this year's October one count. Okay, so. So put together your local contribution, so we're because we're not there yet, they're not just going to take your combined different yield and say that's how much you can contribute. They're going to take your foundation budget and look at eighty two point five percent of it. Compare it to your combined different yield and decide what's less, that's what the state calls your target contribution. Then they look at how much you had to contribute last year to the schools. It looks then at something called the municipal. Growth, which is the effectively, it's a measure of economic growth in your town. It multiplies last year's contribution by the economic growth. And that gives you. Another a preliminary local contribution, which they then go back and compare to this first number down at the bottom here. And they decide, they try to figure out how close you are to your original target. So again, what they're doing is they're running a calculation that says, how much could you contribute? And then effectively looking at what did you give last year, how have things changed locally? What is that end up meaning for your ability to contribute? And again, in both ca- in all of these cases, they're running these separately for each of your towns. Again, you know, so you can have town, you know, you may well have towns that have very different municipal revenue growth rates from one year to the next. And that, again, has an impact on how much your town is supposed to be then told by the state it has to contribute to the schools. It does, and the state does do a little bit of up or down towards the target, depending on how far out of the target you are. So here's yet another spreadsheet. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to, I what I did was I took these for each of the towns and I'm not going to talk through each of them, but I wanted you to at least sort of see what the numbers look like. And so, again, you know, for Bolton, what's the equalized property valuation, got about one point one billion dollars. What's the income valuation, about four hundred forty seven forty seven million? Same multiplication happening in both cases. Together, if you take the local effort about three point nine, local effort of three point six. Add them together, you've got a combined different yield of ten point three million dollars. And then you just see local foundation budget, maximum local contribution of eighty two point five percent. Now, the eighty two point five percent is the state saying. Everybody's going to get some chapter seventy eight, regardless of your ability to fund your schools. So there are school, there are there are towns in the state that can more than fully fund their schools, they still get state aid regardless, that oh, that happens everywhere. So the target for Bolton is it is that eighty two point five percent. And then if you look over on the right hand side. Last year, Bolton was required to contribute a total of nine point one million dollars. The municipal revenue growth for the town of Bolton was four point four one, four point one four, excuse me. So that would make your preliminary local contribution this nine point five billion dollars. And because that's below the target, right, that's only seventy nine percent. They run this additional calculation down here at the bottom. Now, some of this, these numbers may look a little different than maybe what you had seen, and the reason for that, of course. Is it's really actually twofold. One is that Bolton has a single student that is going to a regional VOTAC that you are of a of a which you are not a member. So that student actually gets their own acknowledgement and their own column in the foundation budget. And then you have fourteen students that are going to Minuteman. And we'll talk to me, talk about Minuteman in a second. So that's how that that required local contribution then gets divided. Among the three effectively districts. That the town of Bolton has students attending in terms of the public schools. And then I did the same thing for each of the other towns. So Lancaster, billion dollars in equalized valuation, three hundred and fifty six million in income, same multiplication problem. Gives you eight point six million dollars in the combined different yields. So one of the things that may be valuable for you to know as a school committee, right, is that coming from Bolton is an eighty two point five percent target local share. Notice that Lancaster is a seventy two point seven nine per target share. So it's Lancaster has a little bit less of an ability to contribute to education than Bolton does by the state's measures here. Same calculation being done over here on the right hand side. Last year, Lancaster was required to give seven point eight million, municipal revenue growth of three point five four. Which gives a preliminary contribution of eight point one, and obviously, that is also under the target. And so the state brings it up a bit, so event eventually what Lancaster ends up with. In terms of their presented foundation is the sixty eight percent, and Amy has her hand up.
Thank you, so I'm just trying to find where you're you're. Oh, and now I just found it, the target local share for Lancaster is seventy two point seven nine. So and now that I see it, I don't have to ask that question, but I have another question, which is. These combined effort yield values that you're you've highlighted in a green box. That is what the state is saying each town's minimum. Required contribution towards the school budget, or is that?
So your minimum combined contribution is actually the what the bold faced number that's down at the bottom right hand corner after we go through the whole calculation.
Okay.
Let's see, eight point one.
I I'm just trying to take what you're presenting and compare it to the budget that was presented last year and these.
We'll get there.
Okay, there's another piece that's missing still, because these are much lower than.
They're much lower numbers, exactly, that's and that's why I keep putting the quotation marks around adequate, minimum adequate funding. It's minimum adequate funding, so Neshoba, not to give away the game, not that this is really, you know, I I don't want to leave you all in intention here, but. Neshoba is in very good company in contributing well over the minimum required. So the statewide average in two thousand nineteen was a thirty one percent over foundation. In terms of how much most districts were giving to their giving to their schools. So the the conclusion of most of Massachusetts has been. And this really gets into the crux of why we passed Student Opportunity Act, honestly. That the state's calculations have been inadequate, actually, that for all the chapter seventy talks about adequacy. It actually hasn't been adequate, and so, much like most other places. Neshoba Regional has been funded above foundation, and that's extra, that's very, very, very common, and honestly, it's why we have passed this this rather significant bill. In two thousand nineteen to change the foundation budget.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. No, I am glad you're making that comparison, because that's 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 exactly the kind, that's a smart thing to do. The so again, so Lang in Lancaster's case, do you keep in mind, so the thing to keep in mind on when we're doing this calculation here is that we're talking about the town of Lancaster. And thus, the town of Lancaster has its own foundation budget, because their foundation budget is their contribution to Neshoba and their contribution to Minuteman. So you can see here how that splits out in terms of their required local contribution, you know, their part local contribution is a total of eight point one million dollars. But their minimum required local contribution then gets divided between Minuteman and Neshoba. And again, same thing here, right, Stowe. Equalized valuation, one point four billion dollars in terms of property, five hundred and sixteen million in terms of income. Same decimals, again, our old friends, getting us to a combined different yield of twelve million, twelve point one million dollars. Stowe's foundation budget for the town is thirteen point two, so their maximum local contribution, that eighty two point five percent is ten point nine million dollars. So Stowe is another target local share dis- town of eighty two point five percent. Last year, looking over on the right hand side, their local required local contribution was ten point six million dollars. Municipal revenue growth was was four point one, which gets their preliminary contribution to eleven point one. And in their case, that's actually above their target, right, their target was only ten point nine. And so there is this calculation that brings them a bit down and gets them to that eighty two point five percent. And Stowe also has an out of district vocational student. And so you've got that cal- column here as well, along with the column for Neshoba and the column for Minuteman. Which then gives you how is the ten point nine million dollars in the required minimum local contribution divided up among the districts.
Tracy, can we pause here for a second?
Absolutely.
Do we know who where the student goes, this one student I did?
You must, I I mean, I my my joke always is that everybody always seems to be going to Norfolk Aggie and major and looking at equine science, but.
Yes, that's funny.
Because not everybody has horses, that always seem to be, yep.
This number just doesn't seem to reflect, if we do, we're sending a student there, I knew we were in the past. And it was closer to fifty thousand dollars to send the kid there when you baked in the transportation and everything, so.
This doesn't. Yep.
So, I mean, to me that.
Yeah, so remember that this is the state's calculation, so much as honestly, the other question, which is that. This is the, this is the base minimum. Then school committees decide how much is it actually going to cost us to run the district? And then actually create local assessments based off of that, so this is the ground level. The same thing then happens with the regional VOTACs that have out of district students. They actually get some determination of how much that costs, and yes, you're right, the town also then has to pick up transportation, and in many cases, the transportation is actually more than tuition.
Yeah, so if people are looking for where that number appears for this one student, since we all seem to have one student. It'll actually be on your warrant. So on your warrant, there'll be there'll be a an article for Neshoba, then there'll be an article for Minuteman. And then you'll, it'll literally say like, if the student's going to Assabette, it's going to be like fifteen thousand, if they're going to Norfolk, it's going to be like fifty.
Absolutely, yes. And and I and I'm glad you put it that way, because it does, it it's honestly a little bit more transparent in a town, because the towns actually do have to do each of the sections separately. All right, so this is actually the part, go ahead, there's nothing else? No, okay, this is actually the part that is potentially.
Thank you.
Starting to answer your question, right? So that was only the local section, and so if you remember. The state does this calculation of how much can the town afford to contribute. The state's always going to kick in some chapter seventy eight. Now, because you're a regional, there is in every case, pieces that get put together for each town. And then that then leaves a hole in the middle, right? So there's the required minimum local contribution for each of the towns. And then the state comes through and actually puts in chapter seventy eight that fills the gap in between things. Which in this ca- which in your case for FY twenty two is seven point eight million dollars. Now, the thing to keep in mind, and I think this is important in regionals, in particular. Is that districts that have that towns that have less of an ability to contribute. Automatically get more chapter seventy eight, because everybody gets to that that foundation level, that one hundred percent, whatever it is. Depending on where your town's ability to contribute was, is that may be just. The seventeen point five we were talking about, which is for the eighty two point five contribute contribution communities. Or it may be a bit more than that. It's the state, though, gives the chapter seventy eight to your regional district, it doesn't go to the towns. And so all of those numbers effectively get merged together in their calculation. So that's actually what I'm trying to show you here is that the piece the pieces sort of coming together. Now, for those of you who are then trying to say, okay, but this is actually not what my budget looks like. What I didn't do is I didn't take your FY twenty two, because FY twenty two, you know, as much as we all have, we all pass our budgets and, you know, we. Have made our decisions, we also know that that number's changed over the course of the year. And so what I did was I had some great coordination from Pat in your finance office, and I appreciate her getting back to me even again this afternoon. And I actually pulled your twenty one number, so twenty one is complete, you finished it, you've submitted your report, it's done. And this, I think, gives you a better idea of what your budget actually looks like. Now, what I didn't do is I didn't divide your additional local contribution by towns, I think that you're probably familiar with what that looks like. But the 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 beginning of the calculation. For, and I'm not sure why it gave us percentages, that should be dollar amounts on the left hand side, sorry about that. For is is the twenty six point nine of your required local contribution, which is all three of your towns together. In your local required contribution. The state then kicks in the seven point eight million dollars we talked about of chapter seventy eight. And that gets you to your foundation, okay, so that. Okay, so that actually is getting you to the to the the calculation that the state had done back at the beginning to say, what is your fair and adequate minimum? Now, um, not surprisingly, most districts get state and in particular federal grants. Last year, you got about one point four million dollars in that. And then you, as a school committee and your predecessors, have agreed that the thirty-four million dollars is actually not adequate for running the Neshoba Public Schools. And again, as I said, you're in very good company there. That's most of the state. Um, and in total, you had a funding of about ten point six million dollars over foundation in addition to the um state and federal grants that you had for FY twenty-one. Okay, so this should look more like what your picture, you may not have had a a bar chart that looked quite like this. Um, note that this does not include your transportation. It also doesn't include whatever you're using. Effectively, you're using your revolving funds. It doesn't include your E and D. So there's pieces of this that are are missing. Um, but in terms of the pieces that are most of your local contribution, um, and then how does that come together with your chapter seventy-eight, that's what's actually going on here in terms of that. So then if you look at, then what is the balance of what you're contributing versus what the state is contributing, you end up with a with a different picture. And then obviously, you would know better than I in terms of how this divides out amongst your towns. Um, and the this is one of the things that I think is important to keep in ti- in terms of regionals, in terms of how their budget gets put together, is that minimum local contribution is done by the state. It's done, as we said, um, by the foundation budget of the town and then by the ability of the towns to contribute, which does that standard calculation. Additional local contributions are then controlled by the the regional agreement among the towns. So those calculations sometimes effectively are separate. They they may well just be coming from other from other directions. Um, so I think it's good to be kind of grounded in both of those to have a better idea of what that looks like. And so, you know, your agreement, as you probably know, versus other towns' agreement, other regionals' agreements may well be different in terms of how they handle that additional local contribution. So you asked me to touch on Minuteman Regional. Um, and so I did want to give you, you know, some insight in terms of how this worked. I thought it was useful for you to understand. Honestly, Minuteman's calculations work exactly the same way that yours do. Um, they just have significantly more towns involved, and um they're effectively kind of only pulling that vocational line, right? They're not pulling anything else. So this gives a list of the towns that are in Minuteman Regional that are members, um their enrollment, and then their required um their required minimum contribution. Now, keep in mind, for each of these towns, they've done exactly that same calculation that we did for Bolton and for Lancaster and for Stowe. Um, so these minimum local contributions are based on not just the student enrollment, but also on the town's ability to contribute. Um, and you do have some varied need here. Um, the these are, I mean, these are largely districts that are are um higher ability to contribute, higher targets. Um, but you do have some variation within them, so that that's not a bad thing to keep in mind. Now, much again, to Amy's point, you know, this is the state's calculation. Minuteman's school committee sits down and puts a budget together um and says, okay, what do we actually or what are we actually going to need in order to actually fund the schools this year? Um, now, this again does not have um probably all of their revenue lines in it. This is all, I pulled this straight out of their budget. Um, and apparently I misspelled tuition, unfortunately. I should fix that. Um, but this gives you some idea then of how the various pieces of the actual contribution, which which we know is above the minimum, um come together with things like transportation reimbursement. And then also note, the sort of mustardy color over on the left is actually their chapter seventy. Um, so they have the same thing that happens, which is you take the minimum local contributions, um, you compare that to the foundation budget, the gap between those is filled in with chapter seventy-eight. Then the other thing that they're doing is they're then also putting a budget together that says, okay, but our actual need is this. Um, and they then do their local assessments based on that. And then obviously, uh, Minuteman also has a significant number of students that attend that are that come from towns that are not part of the regional district. Um, and there those students are tuitioned. So those students in those towns would be that single column line that you saw for um the students, the single students that you had going elsewhere in your own in your own towns. So in terms of, you know, I wanted to give you sort of a a picture looking ahead too, because Leah asked me to try to give you kind of a, you know, where you since you're kind of potentially launching here, what does that look like? Um, and one of the things that I think is important is that the budget works much like a lot of the other things that school committees do with their superintendents, which is that it's it's work that effectively gets handed back and forth between the school committee and the administration. Um, so ideally, what should happen is that the school committee should set budgetary priorities for each year. Um, you would do that in line with your strategic plan, with the goals that are set for the superintendent, um, with, you know, the needs of the district. Obviously, this is while this is a school committee responsibility, obviously is done in dialogue with the superintendent, the administration. Once those priorities are set, then that's when the administration is going to create a proposed budget, which is in line with those. And with in line, then also, of course, with the assessment of the su- of the superintendent and the administrations of the district needs. When that proposed budget goes to the school committee, the school committee deliberates it, school committee makes what changes it deems to be necessary, um, and then passes the budget. And then, as you all know, it then goes to the appropriating authorities who deliberate and, we hope, simply pass their allocations. Then it goes back to the administration to implement. Um, and then the other piece of this that I would note, which I will talk about in a second, is that the the oversight of the budget, though, continues under the purview of the school committee. So to give you a a little bit of an idea as to then how this sort of interacts over the course of the year, um, this is a cycle. It goes around, and in many cases, parts of this are happening at the same time. Um, but, you know, the a- assessment of um needs under priorities is done by the superintendent administration. Budget is proposed, um, school committee deliberates and appro- and approves. As I assume you know, you need a two-thirds vote um in order to have your budget approved, um, both at the committee level and then also by the towns. They approve the bottom line of the general fund budget. Um, and then this is upper right, in the upper left-hand corner, I do want to note that part of your ongoing budgetary responsibilities is the work that you do over the course of the year. So the warrants that you sign, oops, the warrants that you sign and um whatever budgetary reports you get over the course of the year. Um, and those should be something, some of the pieces potentially that you use as you're considering um what kinds of budgetary priorities you have. And in many cases, one assumes they're also reflecting some of the conversations that the the administration may be having over the course of the year too, in terms of the following fiscal year. Particularly, I will say, um, because regionals are responsible for getting their budgets in frankly so early. Um, you know, there really is a kind of a close interaction between this is the budget that we currently are implementing, and here are the things that we think we're going to need for next year. You don't have quite the same luxury of time that some of the bigger cities do, um, where you get to actually, you know, you're not necessarily proposing a budget until May. Um, it's a very different kind of picture in terms of how the budget is put together. There's also, you know, one where it's good to be sort of sensitive to changes that might need to take place. So I hope that capitalizes on things. I'm gonna actually stop sharing my screen, although I do want to make sure you all have my contact information because I know that this is one of those presentations where people sometimes the next day go, wait a minute, I think I actually still have more questions. Um, but I will share this presentation with you as well. And then I'm happy to take whatever questions you have. We can also go back to slides if there are ones that you want to look at again.
Thank you so much, Tracy. That was a lot, and it was really helpful. And uh, we look forward to getting the presentation to Stowe over a little. And so everybody, if if questions don't come to you right now, that's totally fine. I know that we're basically at the end of the hour, but I would like to take another five or ten minutes of your time, Tracy, if that is okay.
It's totally fine.
All right. So anybody have any questions, Tracy? Rich, go ahead.
Um, sorry to go back to this, but those spreadsheets that you you showed screenshots are?
Yep.
Those exist on the Desi website, or you built it from data that's available on the?
Yes, the the spreadsheets exist on the Desi website, so hang on, let me.
Rich, are you just trying to find them?
Yeah, I just need to dig in, look at the formulas and stuff.
Okay, so. Let me. Can I do this? Um.
I teach STEM, so like I need to like get my hands on the data, otherwise I feel like I don't.
All right, so you should, I hope, are seeing your, the Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education's website here? Okay, so they they now have hidden everything, their menus over here on the left-hand side, which I personally find very annoying, but they didn't ask me. Um, administrative and finance, chapter seventy program. And then if you scroll down, um, the state aid and spending requirements are all down here. Um, and what you want is the is this spreadsheet right here, which is the FY nineteen one. You click through, um, it then is going to give you, it actually explains what the changes are for this year, the assumptions and everything else. And then down here at the bottom, um, it gives a summary chart, summer regional school district, and this is actually the one you want, the complete formula spreadsheet. Um, and then I'll just show you that what that actually looks like is this. Um, and so the front page looks like this. It has a dropped, you, what I'll tell you ahead of time is after you download it, you have to enable macros, which allows all the little menus to work. Um, and then has a dropdown menu of all of the school districts in Massa- all, not only the school districts, but also all the towns, because it has to calculate both in Massachusetts. This is the the foundation budget tab is the the chart that I showed you that looked at um how that's put together.
We can't, we can't see, we can't see your spreadsheet, but that's okay. I think I can figure it out. Yeah, so I don't want to take up more airtime if other people want to. Questions. Thank you very much, Tracy.
I forgot I needed to to new share, didn't I?
But I think, Rich, that that is helpful in getting you to the location. Does anybody have any other questions? Yeah, Mike?
Again, Tracy, thank you so much for this. Um, one of one of the last slides that you put up was sort of a composite bar graph of all of the contributions to the overall budget. Um, and I just, and I I I actually think that you were explaining this as I was adding those numbers up. But those numbers added up to about forty-seven million, and ours is our budget's around fifty-nine. So what was that? How can we explain that shortfall again? I apologize if you already explained that.
Transportation is not included in that. Um, and I don't know offhand how much your transportation is, but I'm willing to bet that that's probably most of what's there. So that didn't have the revolving funds in it. It didn't have E and D in it. It didn't have transportation in it.
Got it. Awesome. Thank you.
Tracy, I wonder if I could just ask you another question for our purposes here is at the school committee level. You were talking about how we pass the budget based upon our priorities. And yet, I feel like in the last few years, the towns have come to us and kind of said to us, this is the most you can spend and it's truly below what we need. So how does that normally work? How can we manage that situation or what's appropriate?
Um, so that's sort of half um a procedural question and half a political one. Um, so procedurally, you have the ability to pass whatever budget you deem to be appropriate to the schools and to, you know, then forward on a warrant to forward your request to the towns, which the FinComs then can either, you know, agree to put on the warrant or not. And as I think you all know, you then can decide whether or not you want to effectively p- appeal to the town meeting over the head of the FinCom. You do actually have that ability as well. Um, so, you know, I I think from a more sort of process question, um, I will say that I think that the budget conversations um go a little bit s- not smoother, but you have, I think, a better chance of your needs being more accurately assessed. Um, if you can kind of kick off the conversation by saying, you know, here is, here is what we as a school committee intend to do in terms of public education for the school district. Here is our very clear explanation of how much that's going to cost us. Um, you know, and maybe even here are some of the compromises we think we would have to make if the funding that is available is actually less than that. Um, I will add, just because it's sort of the, you know, the elephant that's sitting in the middle of everybody's rooms right now. Um, this is one where it's particularly, I think, important, given what we're doing right now, for districts to be very, very clear of what's going on with their ESTER funding and also be very, very clear with the towns that you have a really solid understanding of the fact that in twenty twenty-four, that funding is gone. Um, so I think, you know, I I I'm trying to make sure that school committees are very um sort of assertive with their towns in the fact that, yes, there is funding that's available. Um, however, it is funding that is for particular needs that we're meeting right now, and the operating needs of the district, you know, sort of continue. And and one of the calculations I've encouraged districts to potentially do, and maybe you've already done this, um, is, you know, you have probably some idea of what's your average per pupil spending. I generally re- kind of reject that as a as a worthwhile com- comparison because student need is so wide. Um, but if you run that comparison and then actually did a year, how much per year in ESTER funding per student do you have? Those numbers are wildly different. You you are not getting anything close to what you need in order to actually operate your school district in ESTER funding. Um, and so I think that that those sorts of conversations can be useful as well of of what's what it, what is it authentically taken in order to operate the Neshoba Regional School System? And it's a long answer.
The conversations need to be kind of cyclical, where we're in, I think, regular contact with our town leaders.
Absolutely. In fact, you know, I mean, so the joke that I usually make to new school committee members is you don't want to be the people who show up who who are known for two things. One is that you hold up traffic with all those big yellow school buses. And the other is that you show up once a year and you ask for millions of dollars at town meeting, right? Like, you want people to see you more often than that, particularly the ones who don't actually have school students in the district. So, you know, do you have co- do you have people who go to FinCom? Do you have people who go to select board? Whatever those relationships are, do you meet with them regularly? Um, districts handle those that in different ways. Um, but I do encourage, you know, the forming of those of those professional relationships um so that everybody is as much as possible on the same page. It be again, you know, it's a joke, but it's true, so that you're not just standing up a town meeting and asking for however many millions of dollars. Amy, do I see your hand?
I I mean, I I kind of have a follow-up question related to this um while we have Tracy, and I know that we're short on time, but I'm wondering if you have seen um, if you have a recommendation for a regional school district in terms of a best practice for um setting up those relationships in a more formal way, like having FinCom um as liaisons in the school committee or given an official or quasi-official role in the budgeting process, even though it's a school committee function. Is there, have you seen a way that that's worked well in other regional school districts to formalize those relationships?
I think I've seen it more sort of the other way of the school committee having liaisons that effectively kind of like are always at FinCom. Um, I will say that in those cases, you, you know, you want to make sure that those people are clear on when can they speak for the committee and when do they only speak under their own purview. Um, but I think that the sort of the familiarity of the faces, I mean, a- again, this is obvi- I as some of you know, I'm on the Worcester School Committee. I would occasionally show up at city council and they they, one time, the the fi- the city finance director said, well, why are you here? And I said, because this is where the money is. Um, and I made him laugh, but that was also true, right? Like, if it like, I want to know what you all are doing with your money because some of that's going to affect me. Um, I think that if you, if if it is possible to establish those relationships, particularly with the FinCom, but also with the select boards, um, I I wouldn't, you know, my reaction as sort of M A S E is to bristle a bit at the idea of anyone you you sort of pu- giving away any of your own authority budgetarily. Um, but I think that the more that you can potentially bring them alongside, you know, do they know where you are in your budget process come December, come January, come, you know? Um, what does it actually look like in terms of, you know, the comparisons that I I think Rich and others were trying to do or Michael was trying to do in terms of, you know, what has your enrollment does? What is that actually going to mean for your chapter seventy-eight? Is that going to make a difference? Um, what does it actually mean that you're spending ESTER funding? So I think if if you're having those conversations publicly and can bring them alongside as part of it so that they're they're not necessarily facing a surprise when you then send them over your requests, um, I that can potentially be useful.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other final questions here, guys, in the moment? And if not, um, Tracy has made herself available to us by email, which I really appreciate again. And Tracy, if you want to send the PowerPoint or the slideshow to me, I can make sure the committee gets it, and we'll put it into the meeting materials as well.
I'd be glad to do that. Um, and as I think most of you know, I'm not- I'd be glad to do that. And as I think most of you know, I'm not far away, so by all means, you know, get in touch. I'm happy to, to have further conversations.
Thanks so much, Tracy.
Thanks. Take care.
All right, everyone, it looks like we have a full house as we continue our meeting here. So our next matter on the agenda is the citizens' comments, and we do not have any this evening. So we're going to move right on to the consent agenda. And Mike, I wonder if you have the motions handy?
I do have the motions handy.
Fantastic. Give it to us.
All right, so I moved to approve the consent agenda for December first, two thousand twenty-one, continuing the meeting minutes of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the warrants of December third, two thousand twenty-one.
And I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All right, so I'm going to do my best here to make my way around the room. So in favor myself, I say yes. Mary?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe? Was that a yes, Joe? I missed it.
I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Amy?
Epstein?
Mike?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I think I got everybody. Is that correct? Thanks, Leeta. All right, so the motion passes. My slide here. All right, our next matter is the superintendent update, and so Kirk, we will pass it to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. I have shifted my technology tonight to see if that improves my sound, so I'm broadcasting from an iPad this time. Let's see if it, it works a little bit better. So.
It definitely sounds better.
Oh, good, good. So looking at the superintendent's report, I, I will apologize to the committee, I shifted some data in this report a little bit, just in the last hour and a half, because the MISs system has now synced with SNAP. So we were able to get some COVID numbers in there that I'll go over in a minute, and I want you to have what I got just early this, late this afternoon or early this evening. But, you know, as we are thinking about that moment of preparing for optional masking, I would like to express to the committee, I, I am not prepared to make any kind of recommendation to, to go to optional masking at this time. We know, you know, we've heard in the news about the Omicron variant, as they're, you know, the experts don't know the amplitude of what that impact would be, particularly in our environment. So I'm not recommending those things at this time. However, I want us to be prepared. So the vaccination rates are going up dramatically. Our consent for testing rates, as you can see in the memo, have increased dramatically since the last time we reviewed those. So all those things, our community is doing a great job of doing the work that they need to do to get us to the points that we need to get to with eighty percent vaccination rates. I brought to seventy percent consent rates. That was based upon some recommendations from epidemiologists when we were trying to locate cases prior to vaccines. Our community in, in four of our schools have exceeded that, that number already. Oh, which is, which is wonderful. So as we do that, I will just be submitting to the state, at least, the, the waiver form that gives us the authority to move to optional masking if we so choose, because we've made the state's requirement of the eighty percent vaccination metric. And I want to explain that, and then I, again, not going to make that move today, but January fifteenth is the date of which the DESI Commissioner, Commissioner Riley, has set as extending the mask requirement for the state to, and you can apply for a waiver if you meet the metrics. Not knowing what he's going to do at the January fifteenth date, I think it's wise for us to have that paperwork in place. So in the event that he were to extend that option down the line, we can make a local decision based upon our local metrics and how we're doing here in the Shoba system. So that, that was a lot of words to basically say to you, I'm trying to set the table so that we can make our local decisions based upon our local metrics at that right moment. And I anticipate that right moment to, to at least those options be in front of us in the middle of January, after we've come back from the winter vacation for a couple of weeks. To that note, a key element that has come into play since I last present to you on this topic is our weekly COVID safety checks are up and running. And the high school has done this now for a couple of sessions, and our Lancaster schools had their first round today. And the entire school system will be up and running next week. So with that being said, I think that's great news we've all been waiting for. And now let's see what the effectiveness of those weekly tests are to see if it teases out asymptomatic cases in our buildings that we otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't be able to find. I will tell you, and I'll just kind of put a, a plug in there for Nurse Gilbecky and her team have been fabulous through all this, but I'll tell you what, our nurses are, they are, are just working all day long, every moment of the day to try to get everything in they need to do. And with the weekly safety checks now, there is quite a bit of, of, you know, the companies come with for employees that join our nurses and doing the test. It's just not enough. We need more. And, and I asked, I said, can we do a call out for volunteers in our community who are vaccinated that can come in and participate in the checks that aren't, don't have to do duties that are required for training? And she said, yes, they are, just in terms of tracking students, writing names on clipboards, those types of things, as we do administrative type things with that. So I'm putting that out to our, to our community in my Friday update this week. I'm going to put a signup form that if we have some members of our community out there that would like to volunteer in our schools to help our nurses with our weekly COVID safety checks, we would encourage you to do that, because I know some folks have asked me how they can contribute. And I said, I just don't know yet. Well, now we're getting a sense of what we need. And Nurse Gilbecky can talk to those folks that are interested, but I'll be sending that out on Friday. So as we move further down, I want to take you down to the vaccination rates that are in the chart. If you printed up before, if you printed this before five-thirty tonight, I'm sorry, you won't have the numbers I'm speaking of. And as the SNAP system, which is the nurse's medical system for recording when students, you know, come down to the office and things, when it integrates with the MISs system so that we can understand the vaccination numbers in our schools. For some wonky reason, fifth grade didn't sync up. It's a technical glitch in the program that's going to be fixed tomorrow. But Center School, their, their students, grades K to four, and I anticipate fifth is probably close to it, are in the fifties and up into sixty percent vaccination rates of first shot thus far. At MRE, we're in the thirties to mid-forties. And then at Florence Sawyer, numbers that run mid-sixties, low fifties to mid-sixties. So those, that is really encouraging, because we've only had vaccines available to those students for about four weeks now. So I anticipate when we come back, there they are, thank you very much, Ms. Masterson. So I anticipate when we come back from vacation in January, and we've been in our COVID safety checks for a couple of weeks, we should see our fully vaccinated rates much higher. And we'll be able to look at those metrics to understand what we need to do going into the springtime. So moving away from sort of the updates on where we are with our, our COVID safety checks, I've included in here, there's a link to the club offerings that the district is providing. So if you click on that link in your packet, and you'll see all the familiar club offerings that we had prior to COVID being offered at our schools. Kids are doing band after school and robotics and all those things that interest them. So I provide that to you for your consumption. And certainly, if you have any questions about that, you can reach out to me and I'll follow up. Facility rental rates, I put a note in here today, Ms. Maroni and I were talking about facility rental rates earlier this week. And she has done some work in looking into her collaborative and giving some comparables about our facility rates. And rather than bring those rates directly to the school committee, we think it, it's most appropriate to take this to the warrant and budget committee. So she'll be doing that here, hopefully, and talking to the chair of that committee to get that on the agenda so that that committee can look at those comparables, look at our current rates, and come back to the school committee with a recommendation for facility rental rates. So I'm putting that in here as a notice to you that Ms. Maroni will be taking that to the warrant and budget committee. If, if, if Mr. Rubenstein would be willing to put that on the agenda, of course. Then the last piece, before we move into teaching and learning, is the Lancaster boiler update. The mobile boiler unit is onsite in Lancaster now and is currently being fixed so that it can tap into the regular heating system of the school. Bringing in the mobile boiler was necessary because the boiler that was, was dysfunctional and had to be dismantled. The, for various reasons in the economy today, they have not been able to deliver the parts to reconstruct that boiler. So we needed to put in the mobile unit to ensure that the school had a backup source of heat in the event that the primary boiler were to fail. But also, if we had some extreme, a stretch of extreme cold and the call for the school required more than, than the functioning boiler can provide, the second boiler would be able to heat the school. So that's there now. This is an item for the town of Lancaster, as it is a, a capital expenditure. And so I, I know that the town is, is looking to put a warrant article out on a special town meeting here soon in order to pay for the capital costs of the boiler. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. McGuire for the teaching and learning update.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. A few things on the teaching and learning. First, just an update on our model school visits. We've secured three more model school visits in the coming weeks in the month of December. Next Monday and December sixth, we'll actually be visiting two schools in the Natick Public Schools. Superintendent Downing will be leading these two visits. On Friday, December tenth, we'll tour North Middlesex Regional High School. And later in December, actually, on Friday, December seventeenth, we just secured that date. We will visit Minuteman Regional Vocational High School. All of three of these districts will give our teams a chance to tour three new model high schools as well as an elementary school. Additionally, our visit to Minuteman will allow us to see additional spaces and programs tied to a comprehensive high school and that kind of programming. Big thank you to Don Lode, Town Administrator in Bolton, for helping to secure and facilitate and lead the Minuteman visit. And Superintendent Downing for helping to organize and facilitate our visit to Natick next Monday. The next item, call for proposals for our district Day of Professional Development. Our Teaching and Learning Department continues to be busy planning for this day and bringing in speakers and presenters for our day on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This day really is focused around social emotional learning as well as social justice. We'll be sending out a call for workshop proposals within the district this week for anyone who wants to contribute to our day in offering a presentation, a showcase, or even a workshop for attendees. And we've also been doing a tremendous amount of outreach outside of the district, looking forward to bringing in a diverse set of opportunities and speakers this year. We're also excited to have our high school graphics class once again work on the design and the logo for this year's theme in creating the, the day around these topics around social justice. And then finally, I've included the link to our latest version of the download from the Teaching and Learning Department. This week's topics include equity as well as social emotional learning, connecting universal design for learning and equity by embracing variability in the classroom. We also have a piece in there on when students resist offers of help for our teachers, as well as updates on our professional development series, integrating social emotional learning with academics, as well as our mathematics book study that we've been working on as well across the district. And then we also have in there, again, the building project update, as well as our, some of our visits to our model schools. So check it out. The link is in the report. Thanks very much.
And with that, we'll take your questions.
Does anybody have a question for Superintendent Downing? I see Sonya's hand.
I had a question about the volunteers for, like, helping with COVID testing. Would it be possible to have student volunteers for that?
That's a great question, Sonya. I'll certainly ask Nurse Gilbecky. I think the types of things we were talking about today, students can certainly help out with. So I, I believe Nurse Gilbecky might be in the room as well. And, but yeah, I think, I think we could figure something out for that. Thank you.
Yes, we certainly can, based on if it's within their own school and it doesn't obviously interfere with time on learning. We can definitely support that.
On that note, Sonya, I was in the video production class today and talking to some students in there, and they're actually doing some promotional videos and things around the weekly COVID checks. So I, I, there are lots of students I know that want to help out and encourage us to, to, to run a safe, healthy environment.
Yeah, I've been hearing from a few of them, so I, yeah, definitely.
Great, thank you.
Mike, I think I see your hand up?
Yep. Oh, my, my camera's off, I'm sorry. Sonya, great question, by the way. I'm really glad you asked that. Superintendent Downing, just real quick, I know that this is just a clarification thing, but I'm looking at the, the data table in your update, and I'm looking at the, at the bottom table, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth. And then fifth seems to really drop off to the point where FSS is zero point zero zero percent.
Yeah, Mr. Harris, that's what I was explaining. There's some glitch with the SNAP system.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
MISs. Okay. And, and so that's the element that is going to be fixed tomorrow.
Sorry about that. I didn't catch it.
Yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't figure out why that was. And so it, it could be, we do know that they, we didn't get these numbers until late this afternoon, and it was only because SNAP had done a software update to adjust for the, the dosage amounts, because that's how they do it in the, the MISs system. So once that simulation was corrected, and I think there, the glitch with fifth grade still exists. So I anticipate those numbers to look very much like the other grade levels did.
Okay. Sorry for the redundancy.
No problem.
Kirk, I'm, I'm just going to jump in here and, and ask you to tell the community, just kind of in some total, the optional masking, you are going to be looking to apply for the waiver prior to the New Year break, but would not be looking to implement optional masking until probably middle of January.
That's right.
If all the conditions are met.
Yes, that's right. It much, we're setting the table and we're getting ready, ready to eat here. But we, I want us to get some runs at weekly COVID safety checks done. I want to make sure there are vaccination rates are at safe levels. Of course, the application I'm putting in is for the high schools, because the high school has met those baseline metrics set by the state. And so I'm consulting with another school system right now. They're implementing a, a policy of looking at what their community infection rates and their school infection rates are as metrics for when they would return to putting masks back on. So before I, I put that information out there, I want to make sure I, I get some more details from that superintendent. But, but that could be a good methodology for us to look to. And talking with the Shoba Boards of Health, since you all suggested I turn back to try to get some more specific metrics on that, I was not able to get anything in, in terms of specifics from them on infection rates and, and consent for COVID testing. And so in, in that way, you know, we got to look to our actual town boards of health. With the town of Lancaster, no matter where we stand, as long as the town of Lancaster has a mask mandate for their public buildings, the Lancaster schools need to remain masked. That is, that is by the ordinance of that town. We have, Stowe and Bolton are currently highly recommend masking, not require it, which does give us more latitude in, in implementing those decisions in our schools.
All right, great. Thanks, Kirk. Any other final questions here before we move on?
All right, see no hands. Uh, we're gonna to our next matter on the agenda and uh that is new business. And again, to Kirk, we're gonna be looking for presentations on our school improvement plans.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to welcome three of our fabulous principals, Ross Mulcarren at Center School in Stowe. Laura Friend, uh, oh, excuse me, Sean O'Shea at Mary Rollinson Elementary. And Dr. Kathleen Boynton from Neshoba Regional High School, as they would like to present their plans to you. And uh tonight's school committee not asking for action on the plans uh as we we do when we introduce not and we vote the following week. So next week I would just uh ask you to vote plans in in their entirety, um all six of the plans together. But without further ado, I will turn it over to our principals uh to share their plans with you. Uh. And I believe I begin with Mr. Mulcarren. Is that right, Mr. Mulcarren?
That's accurate. Can everybody hear me okay? Great, thank you. Uh. So as Alita is pulling up the slide deck for this evening, uh as always, thank you for the opportunity. To present any and all things about our schools. I think we're all in a very sort of unique situation as we continue to transition. Um, you know, all the way back from March of twenty twenty through last school year. To our present moment with the state of our schools and our operations and teaching and learning within our walls. So um, Alita, if you just go to the next uh slide. This is the exact same thing you saw two weeks ago. Uh, I think Joel Bates um. From Sawyer teed it up as I am going to tonight. I think we're pretty calibrated across the buildings with the exception that the high school is a little bit different. Uh, and uh Dr. Boynton will present that information. So currently, Center and MRE are operating off a one-year extension of our improvement plans and we'll get into more detail of those. Our our plans were due to sunset at the end of last year, but due to the pandemic, we continued those plans and updated those um with our school councils. Um, we're obviously running our meetings either virtually or in person on a monthly basis. Um, while not all of our committee, our our school councils may have full membership, we're continuously looking to seek um where we can. So uh a- as I think it was mentioned two, two weeks ago, um with uh Mr. Bates, Mr. Grady and Mrs. Friend. You know, as we start to look to next year uh for a a cycle of new school improvement plans. We're gonna take into consideration alignment with the district improvement plan. I think also considering uh where we end up with the portrait of an Ashoba graduate work. Uh, the strategic planning and sort of entrance work uh that Superintendent uh Superintendent Downing is doing. And then obviously communicate that information uh out to all of our stakeholders. Um, and along the way, obviously solicit their input as well through. Surveys or forums or whatever the format may be uh as we build our school improvement plans. Alita, could you just go to the next slide for center? Thank you. So two thousand eighteen through to through two thousand twenty-one, the Center School had a school improvement plan that had three major areas uh for goals. One was social emotional learning, another one was teaching all students, and the third one was communication. And at that time, those very much mirrored uh what was within the district improvement plan. So where were we at sort of prior to the closure of March of twenty twenty and last year? What some of our our outcomes and goals were um were 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 actually, interestingly enough. Um, sort of addressed through the pandemic and if not brought further out by the pandemic. So with regards to social emotional learning, just as a a sort of a state of things. One of the things that we wanted to do during the last two years of our school improvement plan. Was to bring in an outside speaker, uh sort of an expert to talk to families about childhood anxiety and screen time. And certainly the pandemic uh has influenced both of those things. And we, as an extension for this year, want to keep that going. We've identified a consultant uh that will be working with me to schedule two virtual parent nights for the remainder of the year. And a survey to the parents will go out to get more information about, you know, how did the first one go? What more information do you need and how can we cater it to the needs of families? Obviously, the surveys that will go out to the 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 families in the crafting of our new school improvement plan. And uh we'll continue to do our building-based SEL PD uh to integrate social emotional learning into our content areas. Uh, we have our first actual work with our teachers coming up in December, next Friday. Um. So all that inform, all that will be sort of surveyed and inform our next school improvement plan. But you know, um, I think. We were headed in the right direction and I certainly think that the pandemic told us that uh. The social emotional learning pieces for our students continues to be so crucial. Uh. Our second goal, teaching all students um and improving systems of intervention and enrichment. A lot of this came out of our literacy work um with our consultants that we had a multi-year um professional development schedule with. Um. So as a as we finish that, we look to teacher-led book studies to continue to develop our our literacy skills and our differentiation. Um, we will continue to review assessment data for areas of improvement and intervention. Um, as a process at the Center School in October, we went through all of our literacy data, first through fifth grade and identify areas in students where we wanted to. You know, place intervention um into our schedules. We've also been able to add after-school clubs. I think that's such a critical piece and we I we recognize that that does help to round out. Um, some of our student interests and and certainly going back to the first goal, their connection to school. So the communication goal, our third goal, a lot of that was focused um initially in our school improvement plan that's now been extended. On how can we come up with a system of a one-way system of um or actually not a one-way, but a two-way system. Of communication with families through a single um platform or app. So we'll continue to pursue those and certainly the pandemic and the closure and hybrid learning inform that because we had the use of Seesaw. And Google Classroom and obviously family communication was an all-time um sort of priority for us. We'd also like to update our parent handbook moving forward. Part of the reason for that is that we have a lot of new families and I think that's shown us that. Because they haven't been in our school as much, because our our doors have been closed. Some of that natural sort of picking up of like, hey, how do we do things within our walls? Has been, has been, has been missed or not had the opportunity to gain. Through those natural visits to school and parent nights and celebrations and things like that. So we want to update our parent handbook to be a little bit more targeted and specific. And then we want to review our homework policy and practices. I think, you know, obviously the closure and the and and hybrid learning and remote learning will inform all of that. But that was one of the things that we wanted to to look at in the final two years of our SIP. That will continue to move forward as we we start to plan for our next one. Thank you.
Well, I'll jump in now. Um. I'd like to thank everyone for um having us um here at your meeting tonight. Been a while, so it's it's nice to be back and to be able to present um about um, you know, what's going on at the school. So um, Mr. Mulcarren did a great job of kind of teeing this up and explaining where we all are with our our school improvement plans. And as you look at the Mary Rollinson one, you can see the similarities in goals one, two, and three in terms of. Goal one has to do with the social emotional uh learning environment and practices. Two is about uh the uh meeting the needs of all learners um through instruction. And goal four, uh goal three is the um uh one about communication and working with parents in the community. Um. So some highlights of uh what we are working on this year and what we're starting to accomplish. Um, as Principal Mulcarren said, we're looking forward to next week. We've had a core group of teachers that have gone through a lot of training about uh being able to facilitate professional development. About how to integrate SEL practices within the classroom and daily within lessons. And that group's been meeting uh quite a bit over the last couple of months and really looking forward to jumping in uh in December and onward, uh working with the staff on that. Um, that doesn't mean that it hasn't started. Uh, we haven't started that work already in the classrooms. Uh, when we look at um goal two, that's probably where we've spent a tremendous amount of time uh this year. Um, trying out things and implementing new practices. Uh, one big thing that we've brought back is uh our stat processes where we um usually uh teachers individually bring students to. Um, concerns to a larger group and go through um concerns and strengths and then try to find interventions to support a student. We've brought back uh something we used to call batch stat where um uh we work with a whole grade level to look at all the data that we have. Um, uh about all those students in that grade level and try to identify groups and interventions. And that goes for uh some of our uh highest students, uh all the way to the students who need some remediation. So we're comprehensively looking at students. Our last batch stat, we looked at uh literacy and um the SEL. Um, practices of students and talked about things we could do to support them. We start another round of, we do this every uh six to eight weeks. Our next round starts next week and we'll be focusing on mathematics. And um again, talking about SEL practices. In terms of math, we have um put a lot of focus this year on improving our data. Um, and we're piloting something called Star Math this year. And um gaining a tremendous amount of data and information that can go directly to um intervening and a planning uh for teachers. That we can really track students throughout the year and how they're doing um on standards and uh adjust our teaching as we go through the year. Um, uh also um in goal two, um we've uh just, we're starting to implement a homework uh support club. Uh, u- utilizing our Title I funds. Um, I believe we're starting next week. Um, and that will uh go about eight weeks. We'll review the students who are participating, see if we need to add more or if some stu- students don't no longer need it. We'll adjust that um every six to eight weeks also. Um, right now we have a a small group, maybe about ten, ten students who um are identifying and uh opting into for that support after school. Um. And I'd say lastly, our our third goal in uh is about communicating with the parents and the community. Uh, this year, our school council, uh our PTO worked really hard to get uh all of our school council members. Um, I would say their students aged out, so we needed a whole new refresh of our uh school council. And our our PTO worked really hard at uh having a a great uh uh drive to get volunteers and and voting. Um, and we have a a really robust group of um parents and a community member for the first time in a long time. On our school council, which is great and uh providing um a lot of information uh that comes into us and going out to the community. Uh, the school council also is looking to really get uh uh out to the community information about the high school. And um all the planning that is taking place there. So can be another avenue to um provide the community with information about the site visits and and all the work that's being done there. Um. And we'll be working on refreshing this plan in the spring once, which your graduate uh information comes out. And we um do surveys of the community also. So I think I hit on all the uh, there's so much to incorporate in three plans. But uh I think the big three takeaways are that um it's it's nice to kind of be back to uh really focusing on the students. Uh, social emotional wellbeing and digging into the academics this year. And um really uh find some new things for us to um implement some changes. I'll turn it over to Kate.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for hosting us and and thanks to Principal O'Shea and Mulcarren for um teeing me up for a a nice section here. So as um as was mentioned at the beginning of our presentation, the high school is in um a very different place than um the other schools. Uh, in the Neshoba Regional School District where um there was some turmoil um in the years prior to um. To my uh start here in twenty uh twenty-one in the summer. And um we needed to do some rebuilding, uh so there was not a functional um school council that had existed for a number of years. And when um kind of doing polling from uh for some staff um learned that the existing. Uh, school improvement plan had been perhaps shared with staff early on, maybe in twenty eighteen. But then um given the unrest and turmoil at the school, along with the COVID um nineteen school shutdown, um had not really been revisited since that time. And so staff were unfamiliar with the school improvement plan. Um, when I brought initially to the reconstituted and reinvigorated school council. Um, my staff members were not, you know, on the school council itself, were not familiar at all and had not done any work. Really towards any of the goals um on the school count, on the in the school improvement plan. Um. So I went and consulted with the superintendent and Dr. McGuire. Um, and asked if it would be possible to create a one-year plan that really reflected the work that we were doing this year. Um, and got uh the go-ahead to do that and also align some of the the current work that we're doing here at the high school with the work. Um, that's occurring at at other schools. So you're see, um, and it within the district, so you'll see some similarities. Um, brought a draft to school council actually last week and we had a fantastic hour and a half meeting. Uh, got some great feedback, made adjustments in the moment. Um, and it was unanimously approved by my school council last week, so I'm I'm very excited. And it is a one-year goal, but I will say that there are some elements in here that could very well continue into next year depending on. Uh, the district's uh improvement plan as well as the the more long-term strategic plan. Um. So without further ado, each goal has its own slide and I'll dig in a little bit more. Uh, the first goal for Neshoba Regional High School is to foster a positive, sustainable and healthy school culture and climate. To support the social emotional learning and wellbeing of all students and staff members. Which then extends to the relationships with the greater Neshoba community, um which I feel is incredibly important. It's aligned with district learning goals one and two, which is um social emotional learning and learning environments. Really, the outcomes are to create this positive school culture and climate um that's that's growth-minded. Uh, one of the first steps is to create clear communication protocols, both internal and external, that all members of the school community use. Um, as well uh as uh implementing effective methods of communication, the first being um the weekly newsletter. Uh, and that's, you know, clear communication transparency most definitely has a positive impact on school culture and climate. Uh, the next sort of major step is partnering with uh an organization called Bright. Stands for the um Bridge for Resilient Youth and Transition. They are an organization out of Brookline, um the first in the nation to create a transition program for students returning to school. Uh, after long-term absences, be they um social emotional hospitalizations, um concussions. Or uh, you know, other reasons for for being out long-term. And we're seeing uh an increased need. We saw this increased need prior to COVID. And then most definitely with um student social emotional health being uh one of the key issues that that students are struggling with. Having this program brought into the high school and partnering with Bright to ensure that we're using data-driven. Um, methodology uh to create a successful program is incredibly important to us and the district is is supporting us in this. Um, in in this effort. Um, the next step is incorporating our castle social emotional competencies. And have those embedded into classroom and school practices. This is very, very similar um to what's happening in other schools. It's our district-wide SEL effort and we're really excited to have our our teacher train, the trainers. Um, be able to uh to implement the training next Friday, uh the tenth of December. Some other things that are in here uh in here that I did not highlight, but I'm happy to share and and they're in the plan that I shared. Is the implementation of the the practice of praise walks. Um, classroom visits to reinforce and celebrate positive things happening in the classroom and have teachers engage in those praise walks uh with with one another. Uh, and with, you know, potentially with with administrators as well in a nonevaluatory way, but we're getting into classrooms, we're seeing good things. And there's an excitement and a buzz around what's happening um in classrooms at at Neshoba. Um, and then, so I think that's the the castle competency was was the last one. Um, so Alita, next slide would be great. The second goal is really around teaching and and learning, but also creating this educational vision. So it's a little bit combined with our um very labor-intensive um building visioning work. But also looking at the types of instruction um that we're offering and the supports that we're offering uh to students within Neshoba Regional High School. So we'll, we will create a shared vision for authentic and engaged teaching and learning for the twenty-first century. And this shared vision will increase student engagement and achievement in all content areas, grades and levels. Through the implementation of common innovative inclusive instructional practices and strategies that meet the needs of all learners. So really, the outcome is to create this shared vision for what twenty-first century teaching and learning looks like. At Neshoba Regional High School in this revised educational plan, how are we gonna use this new building that um that's going to be built? Um, to come to common agreement about what. To come to common agreement about what those common inclusive instructional practices are and what they look like. And then begin the implementation of those innovative, inclusive instructional practices. And that includes exploring UDL, Universal Design for Learning through the lens of equity as well. And, and that's the, we've started that with our book study, which is Equity by Design. And so that'll be continuing and partnering work that, that's being done within the district. Taking a look at our STAT process, which is very similar to other schools, making sure that our student referral process, we are refining it and including teacher voice in that and, and, and teacher partnerships within the STAT process to then create intervention plans at a tier one and a tier two level and then up into tier three for any students who are struggling. And then becoming a little more familiar in the use of data in order to inform instruction as well as develop those tier one and tier two interventions. One of the things that we have done in terms of the shared vision is we have engaged in two parts of the, the Back to the Future Protocol with staff and interdisciplinary groups. We still have the third portion of the Back to the Future Protocol. And there's been some incredibly rich, rich dialogue and data that's been gathered and, and now needs to be curated to more fully refine that revised educational plan and departments are digging into that as well at, in department meetings. And Alita, next and last slide. The final goal is the portrait of the graduate. So this is because it really is centered around when students leave Nishoba Regional High School. I know it's, it's a pre-K through 12 plan, which is incredible. But the work that we're doing at NRHS to create that, that portrait of the, of the Nishoba graduate is part and parcel of the work that we're doing for the, the building project, also for our NIASC accreditation, which is down, down the line a few years. And will absolutely inform the types of offerings that, that, and the types of programming that will be offering at Nishoba in the future. So the outcome for that is the successful creation of a Nishoba Portrait of the Graduate. And that's obviously in collaboration with the district, our school, family and community partnerships. One thing that I would add is that now that this is presented to school committee, I am happy to share the, the revised and updated school improvement plan with my staff at tomorrow's staff meeting. Since it's now also been approved by the, the NRHS school council. So thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to share tonight.
Madam Chair, I want to thank our principals for coming in. I know we'll have some questions, but I, I want to commend our three principles tonight, but our three principles that presented last week to show that they've really taken to heart some of the big things. You, the communication thread, social, emotional learning thread that's across all these plans, that really speaks to the fact that we're aligning our arrows. So we're, we're hitting the things that we need to hit together. So great job to those folks.
I concur.
You bet.
Yeah, fantastic. Thank you so much to all of our principals. Guys are absolute superstars. And I, I just actually want to jump in and say that I'm so grateful for all of the ways that you are including the community in those school councils and, you know, rejuvenating them or just continuing with that great work that you've been doing. It's really commendable. So thanks. I wonder if anybody has any questions to ask about the school improvement plans. We'll be approving them at our next meeting. Yeah, Mike.
This may be a question for the superintendent, but really for anyone who knows, but once these school improvement plans do get approved, supposing I'm a parent that is interested in taking a look at these and evaluating them, where would they live?
Yeah, we can, we post them on our school webpages. Mr. McCarron, did you want to comment on that?
I think most of our school improvement plans are available on our school-based pages. I know that ours is on the top of our school council page for the center school. And it has the, includes the updates and the extensions that we put in there. So I'm not, I'm, I'm pretty sure that most of the buildings have that, but.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, terrific. Well, again, thank you to our principals. We completely appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think also too, I think we'd all want to thank our school councils for their hard work and certainly parents and teachers for taking time out of their day and after school to be part of that. So I think we'd be remiss in not thanking them. So shout out to all those members, parents and community members. Thank you.
And Principal Karen, I would also echo students. I have some amazing student representatives on school council and they were integral in the feedback about the school improvement plan. So thanks to them as well.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. All right, move on to our next item on the agenda, and that is our food services update. Superintendent Downing.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Ms. Pat Marone to introduce our food service director.
Yes, tonight I would like to introduce Mr. John Obecash. He is our new food service director. He comes to us from Littleton Public Schools. He brings with him many years of experience in food service in the schools as well as the military. And I would just like to welcome John and he has a presentation for us tonight.
Thank you. Alita, could you put up my slide, the first slide? Okay, again, John Obecash, I have a lot of experience in food service. I was 16 years in Littleton. Served in the military and I've basically been in food service my whole adult life. I'm gonna go over our current finance status, menus, our challenges, my vision for the near future. And, and if you have any questions, we'll finish up with that. Next slide, okay. Currently, we're at a 50% participation rate. And pre-COVID, that was about 30%, which is really fantastic. It has put a strain on the kitchens, but all the staff are stepping up and taking care of the kids and, which is what, what it's all about, just feeding kids. Our primary sources of revenue, because all meals are free, continue to just, to be our federal and state reimbursements. Through November, we have taken in $441,000 in federal and state reimbursements, which is fantastic. Our other sources of revenue include catering, some à la carte sales. And especially at the high school, we're serving a lot of second lunches. Students are buying a lot, buying a lot of second lunches. So we're about $26,000 of revenue in those areas through November. Currently, there is no word from the USDA as to whether we're going to continue with the universal free meals next year or whether we're going to revert back to the normal national school lunch program. I think most directors across the country, and I know here in Massachusetts, would love to see us stay at the universal free meals. It really provides a fantastic way for kids to eat and get, get, get their meals in and which they need for learning. And one more note on finances through November 30th, and this is still approximate. I haven't finished all of November's reports yet. The food service account is $103,000 in the black. So we're, we're in really good shape so far. Next slide, okay. Menus. When I got here, I, I like to have a master menu for the whole district. And so we, I create one, it's really based on things that have been served here in the district in the past and recommendations from the managers. And after it's created, they get, each school manager gets the menu and they have an opportunity to customize it for their school. They know best what the students at each individual school enjoy. I don't. They do. And so they will take that menu and they'll, they will customize it for their, their own school. There are a lot of things that remain the same throughout the district. But we found that this is working out very well for us. One, one of the things is, was my vision coming in, so it actually comes later on, was to have a meatless Monday. You know, meat, meatless meals, vegetarian meals are becoming much more popular with, in school, out of school with all these people. So we're, we're, we're doing this now on Mondays. And it's very simple. You know, we might have macaroni and cheese as, as opposed to something with, with, with the meat in it. You can see what we had scheduled for December. You know, we had grilled cheese sandwiches and tomato soup one day on the sixth, mozzarella sticks, stuffed shells. These are things that we normally would be serving, but we're just doing them on, on Monday and highlighting them as, as meatless meals. And they're, they're very popular. We haven't had any, you know, we've had great feedback from the kids on that. Unfortunately, as we all know, the supply chain has created a lot of problems with obtaining everything we need for school. We are getting the, the food we need, but there are challenges involved in that. So to assist us or to assist each kitchen in ensuring that they're going to be able to put out the menus that we're planning, we're ordering three to four weeks out. And this is allowing the, the managers, they'll, they'll get their orders in, things that might be lacking. We can, we have other sources, other suppliers we can go to to try to be sure that we can always serve the published menu. And when we can't, we're, we're able to go through our building principals to notify the, each school community if there are going to be changes in sufficient time. So students don't come to school expecting to get chicken nuggets and they're going to get a hamburger instead, something like that. They'll, they'll know, we try to make sure they all know well in advance. One of the items that has been, was difficult to get was the various types of pizza that we normally serve in school. And what we ended up, what we did to alleviate that was we went to Sal's. If you're familiar with Sal's Pizza, they, it's a great product in the, in their restaurants. They've been having a school pizza version for many years and there's no shortage of getting that. And it's, it's delivered fresh to us whenever, you know, the, the managers order it and it comes in fresh and we just, we cook it in the school and the students really love that. But it's, it's been, it's given us the opportunity to continue to provide a really great pizza product to students. And pizza is a popular lunch item. The other thing that the pandemic and the, the lack of some items has forced us to do, and it's a good thing, is to increase scratch cooking, which is another thing, you know, we, we're going to work on over time. And the, the first thing we started introducing was scratch-made soups. Then we're, we're starting to use fresh eggs in our breakfast sandwiches because we just can't get the, the egg patties anymore. It's just very, something very difficult. So these are things that we've been working on on the menus and to work in progress. We, we, we take a look at the menus every month, get rid of what's not working or take it out for a while, put in something new and try to keep a good variety going for all the students. Challenges, as I mentioned, supply chain isn't, has been an issue. Price of groceries is, is up 6%. It started off down about 2%. But throughout the year, we've had to suffer surcharges on things and just general price increases. Normally, the, the vendor is required to give us substitutes at the big price. But the prices go up so much that they cannot afford to do that. So what has happened is we've now gone to bidding. The bid goes out monthly, which is kind of crazy, but that's what we have to do to make sure we're in compliance with the state procurement regulations. So that's going to continue on for the rest of the school year. Nonfoods like the paper products, the things that we, we package our meals up in have gone up 25 to 40%. So there have been some significant cost increases to operating the program. We've also found that many manufacturers are opting, opting to reduce or eliminate K through 12 specific products. And it's, that's a big piece of our, of the industry, but they, they are more interested in providing to their commercial customers. They, they go where the profits are. I think we can all understand that, but it does hurt us to a degree. And this has caused us to have to go into using multiple vendors to try to make sure we can always get what we need to produce the meals the kids, the students like to eat. The future with food and procurement is next year's bid may end up, normally we do a fixed price bid for 12 months. We're already, the, the, the mass, they, the mass school bidding group that we belong to is already looking at putting the bid out for possibly six months or less, which is going to be, you know, to hopefully keep, hopefully it'll help us keep our prices, the, the cost of our food down. So as I, as I mentioned, vision for the future, this is for the near future, increase on scratch cooking. As we can return to a more normal serving, we want to bring back the salad bars and introduce hot vegetable bars. And basically what a hot vegetable bar would do is it provides the students the opportunity to make their own choices of their vegetables to go with their meal, meal every day. We, we, we started this in Littleton two years ago and it really increased, it actually increased significantly the amount of vegetables that students were eating and it also decreased waste considerably. And we set it up as a self-service type of operation and there were five different choices every single day. Usually a cold salad and, and four hot, hot vegetables, each one different. And through kind of a, I, I want to start working on a green initiative. I've been in contact with the green team at the high school and I'm going to meet with them. I believe it's a week from, week from Friday. They meet after school and start to see what we can do to partner together to, you know, look, look at different ways of either recycling or possibly using paper products that are more green than what we are currently doing. And to that end, if you have any questions.
That was great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Presentation. It's great to meet you and welcome. Mr. Eckle.
Asking a question that perhaps Pat may not be prepared to answer right now, but be curious, perhaps in a budget and warrant meeting to understand how the price increases will, may trend out or affect the budget. So I guess we'll see that month over month in your operational things, but that's probably putting some pressure on the budget. Also, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Obecash. Great presentation. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you. As far as the overall budget, so far there has not been a negative impact on our budget with these price increases. We're, we're maintaining a, a, a positive balance in, in the, in the account. And I, if the trend stays as it is with the number of students are eating, when you know, we're up at over 50% participation right now, where the, our revenue stream is sufficient to cover all our expenses and have a cushion.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Dr. McCarthy.
Yes, Mr. Obecash, I just want to encourage you and first welcome you and then encourage you and say how much I appreciate the idea of Meatless Mondays and the scratch cooking and your vision to continue with that, with the salad and the, and the vegetable hot bars, the green initiative, all of this is so in keeping with what we know is best, our best practices. And at all levels, especially at the high school level where students become very much more aware of nutrition. And, and, and that's what we have in our district. We have whole people, whole students, they're all whole. And you made the link to learning too. And the better nutrition that students can have, the, the better their learning can be. So and just, you know, disclosure, it's been over 50 years that I've been a vegetarian. So that, you know, obviously that this, this is right in line with what I consider very best practices. So keep going. It's great.
You know, in, in the 25 years I've been in school food service, there've been a lot of changes in, in the way we do business. Some of them were forced on us, others were just things that as directors, we decided were, were good things to do. And the high schools are a good place to start, a lot of them. We, we started that vegetable bar in Littleton at the high school and it was a super hit. And as soon as we can get back to some semblance of normalcy in serving, we're going to, we're going to put it in play here at Nishoba High School.
Perfect. Amy.
Yeah, I just wanted to also say welcome. Thank you. These initiatives all sound really appetizing. No pun intended, but I was also wondering No pun intended, but I was also wondering if you're in, the Green Initiative would be looking into composting options or, you know, recycling programs are kind of like on the backend of the food services program? Cause I've heard that come up in the past and it didn't really gain traction. So I just thought I'd throw it out there. If you're going to be having a meeting with the Green Initiative, anyway.
Exactly. One of the things that I, I was forwarded a video from, from Laura Friend, that a student in her school had made. She's now in the ninth grade and it was excellent. It was a very well done presentation, very well researched. And she has some very good ideas about things that can be done with student support, food services support to, to, you know, recycle, possibly compost. You know, there, there are a lot of things to explore. I've, I've tried to do some of these things in the past and it takes a whole group of people to be involved, to, to support it. And we'll just have to see where we can go with it. I'm, I'm excited to at least look, work with the students and see what we can come up with. Start with some small steps and hopefully it'll grow.
Our high school student has a question. Sonia.
Not so much a question, but a comment. The girl that you're talking about, she's in our green team. And the whole team of us, we have like almost 30 students. We're all very on board and ready to help out with anything. And so, yeah, we're all excited to.
Great. That's, that's good to hear. Well, well, hopefully we'll be able to get some things going.
Thanks, everyone. Are there any other questions? All right, Mr. Overcash, again, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We really appreciate everything you shared with us.
Thank you very much.
And we will move on to our next matter on the agenda now, and that is the extended learning update.
I will turn this over to Dr. McGuire.
Great, thank you. As we all know, we've been without an extended learning program through the COVID pandemic. The last school year, we weren't able to have an extended learning program. And we know that when we left in March of 2020, we haven't seen that program in operation since. So I'm really excited to bring forth our new extended learning program coordinator. As Raina Rego did retire at the end of last year, I'm really excited to introduce Bridget Hannigan. She comes to us actually with experience working in our extended learning program prior. And when she interviewed for this leadership position, she hit it out of the park and she has just been doing a fantastic job this fall in terms of organizing programming, getting the program back on its feet, the hiring of new staff. So she's here tonight to talk a little bit about the program, her vision moving forward. And we're just really excited to have this program back in operation again as it, as it does so before school as well as in several locations after school. So Bridget, welcome. And I think she's going to put up her presentation for you.
Thank you for the introduction and thank you guys for the opportunity to talk about the program. I'm really excited to kind of update you all on what's been happening. I'm just going to pull the presentation up. So this first slide that we have is really, it's kind of an overview of our big goals and themes for this year, our first year back. The program's closed, as you just heard, for about a year and a half, from March 2020 through September 2021. So a major focus at the start was reopening the program from a more logistical standpoint, just locating where walkie talkies have gone, determining what spaces we had, moving our materials to those spaces, determining what staff members would be coming back and also just seeing, you know, what kind of impact COVID was going to have on our program. Beyond that, the program also needed to really focus on reacclimating the staff and students. Many of the staff took on different roles throughout the district while the program was closed. And many students had never attended an after school program until this September. So, you know, beyond all of that, there's a lot of differences in the program this year due to the COVID protocols. So it was really important to take the time really from September through November, and most likely for the rest of the year, to spend that time getting new students and staff members used to the program and to welcome back our previous staff members and students to a program that probably looked a little bit different to them than when they left it in March 2020. We focused on laying this foundation so that we could start getting into the more exciting parts of the program, like enrichment. The enrichment vendor landscape, not unlike many others, looks a little bit different with COVID. There are significantly fewer vendors operating in person or with enough staff to offer consistent programming, especially during our extended learning programs, limited numbers. So to combat that, we'll be pushing forward more of our own in-house enrichment and more of our students-based clubs. We're also, a lot of the after school clubs that are being run through the school, we're partnering with the leaders of those so that parents know that they can send their kids to those camps and that they can then attend the extended learning program afterwards. So that's kind of what we're looking at with enrichment and I'll get a little bit more into enrichment in the next couple of slides. And then finally, we'll be streamlining communication with families. This involves making myself the main contact point as well as finishing a website revamp. This is being done with the intention of unifying all of our sites. Each site is going to be different because each site has different staff, different students, different spaces to work with. But family should be guaranteed a relatively similar experience across the board. So if a parent, a family were to move from one town to the next, they could pretty seamlessly reintegrate into the extended learning program. Moving on to the next slide, this slide really dives into those different tiers of enrichment I was just talking about. The extended learning clubs are geared towards letting students pursue their own interests. They're less structured, there are no costs to families and they don't have maximum or minimum numbers. Adult aides largely chaperon them, but by and large, they're student run and they let students explore with their friends, kind of their own interests within certain areas. Some of these include Harry Potter Club, Lego Club, and we're offering a fourth and fifth grade run arts and crafts club for the K through two students at center as well. The in-house enrichment is a happy medium between clubs and outside vendors. It is more structured, lesson plan based and allows for a higher max number of students than the outside vendor enrichment, which is especially helpful. Most of our sites have between 40 and 70 kids each day. So being able to offer enrichment to more than 14 students at a time is really important and helpful. These run for five to six weeks and are headed by an adult aide. Pre-made boxes will be going out to the sites with enrichment binders and outline, which outline each week's lessons and contain all of the materials necessary to complete the activities. These are more midline with pricing and it is possible that as we make the final tweaks, we could even price a little bit lower, which would make those programs more available to more families. And then lastly, we have outside vendors. While they are more costly, they do offer more specialized leadership and enrichment. Currently, we're sending out registration, registrations for Fun World Language Spanish lessons and Chess Wizards. We're aiming to add a dance class hopefully into the mix as well within the next few weeks. At the beginning of the year, we sent out an enrichment parent survey and the results showed that arts and crafts were the highest level of interest for enrichment, followed by STEM, sports, and then dance and theater. So the goal is really going to be to focus on bringing in those types of programs first. This next slide is really just a more specific outline for, you know, what I just talked about in practice over the next few months. Some of those varying enrichments, you'll see that our in-house enrichment is a little bit lower in cost. It offers higher student numbers. Penn Pal Club is one of our free enrichment clubs. We have a number of those running at every site all of the time, but this is one I'd like to highlight. It matches students with different extended learning students across all of our sites and they get to exchange letters one to two times per month, depending on vacations and holidays. And then lastly, you'll see Chess Wizards and Spanish lessons, which are our two outside vendors that will be coming in. At the bottom, just a quick update on vacation camps. They'll be operating largely the same as they have been. If student numbers allow, we'll be running them in February, April and June. This year, they, this year they will be offered to students K through five. They will be offered to any student in the district, not exclusively extended learning students. It will be half day and full day options with the exception of June when we will be running camp and benching. And the program's just not conducive to half days. For our February enrichment camps, like we have in the past, we'll be offering a variety of different enrichments, both morning and afternoon sessions that students can choose which ones they would like to participate in, and they will also be built in with lunches, snacks and recess times. Finally, there's a slide just updating you on where we're at with tuition enrollment and revenue. Center School is still our largest school, especially in the afternoon with 78 students in the K through three range. We have an additional 25 in the fourth through five range. Florence Sawyer has 74 students in the afternoon program and Emery has 57. And our morning programs are significantly smaller but still sizable with our max number being 28. We are also still working our way through relatively long wait lists for the center programs as well as Lancaster and Bolton. The two slides or the two charts over to my left, you'll see outline the AM and PM days of registration. Five days is still our most popular, however, this year we've seen a pretty big influx in two to three days. As many families have communicated, they do still have somebody working from home. Mondays and Fridays are actually our shortest days, which kind of aligns with that. And then this red table at the end shows what's built so far for this year. There were a good chunk of credits and refunds that needed to be applied and given this year as many families had paid in full for that 1920, 1920 school year, which was cut short. Taking that into account and taking into account students being added from the waitlist, a rough, a rough estimate of where it will be tuition wise is $675,000. We are continuing to look for more adult aides. We're reaching out to local colleges' education program, especially to hopefully get a few more in. That could allow us to increase student numbers. And if we see a trend towards less working from home over the next few months, we could also see a higher number than that. But yeah, that pretty much concludes it. If anyone has any questions.
So thank you so much for that. That was very helpful. And especially fancy that you are superimposed over the presentation. Nice touch.
Thank you. It was actually easier to do this.
Love it. Any questions about the extended day program? I wonder if there is a, I'm sorry if you said this, I know you were talking about reaching out to colleges and such. Do you look at the high school student population to assist? Still, I know that that used to be the case.
Oh yeah, we've reached out to the National Honor Society within the school and we have job postings. And the, actually the guidance counselors do a really great job of helping find students that are interested in sending them our way.
Perfect.
Yeah, they're some of our best. They're a great asset to have. They're like a real connection between the students and the adult aides and the kids respond really, really well to them.
Great. All right, seeing no other questions. I thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Bridget, we're so happy to have you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
That was great. So Superintendent Downing, I'm going to continue to hand the mic to you here as we turn to this item, preschool and extended day rate review.
Yep. And I must apologize to you, Madam Chair, I, I think I got a little overzealous. This, these next two items, it's just the first presentation of them, so there's no action required on these next two items yet. We will take action on these items at the next meeting. So forgive me for that error. But the first item I will bring forward, Ms. Maroni, to talk about the preschool and extended day rate review. So Pat, the floor is yours.
Okay. It is customary for me to bring any requested increases in tuition, building rentals at this time for the upcoming budget year, which, the new budget year, which would be fiscal year 23. So I'm going to share my screen here. So the first one that I'm going to go over is the extended day tuition increase, the proposed extended day tuition increase. Second slide here shows the, shows you what, what the current rates are. We didn't have any increase in, in the rate for fiscal year 22 due to the pandemic effects. So you know, everything just stayed static from fiscal year 21. But for fiscal year 23, we are requesting a 4% increase in, in our tuition rates. And the reason being is we try to align our increases with the costs of our personnel. Most of the members of, of that program are members of the unit C contact. And we had to recoup any increases over that time period so that we could bring it up to date. Does anybody have any questions about these extended day increases? And I can toggle back and forth if you need me to on these slides.
Any questions? None? Or maybe Amy is thinking about it? Go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wanting clarification on whether the increase is, I know you said that the driving force is these salary increases, but would you be able to clarify that the, the rate of increase is actually commensurate to what the salary increases were? I mean, just, I guess my gut reaction, a 4% increase seems like a lot, but then when you look at the fact that it's spread over two years, maybe that makes more sense.
And right, actually, the last time that we did an increase, it was actually at this time of the year. And it was, I believe, the last year of, of the other contract. So this, this will make up for the, any shortcomings from that year as well.
Pat, I have a quick question. For this school year, is the program now self-sustaining?
Yes.
Okay.
I've gone over the numbers with Bridget and we feel that we are self-sustaining. Like she had mentioned in her presentation, due to COVID restrictions, you know, the numbers are down. And at some point in time, we're hoping that we can increase the numbers. She has a number of people on waiting lists. And in doing so, we would also have to increase the number of staff. So we just want to make sure that we're not putting forward a program in which we're not recouping the costs of having the personnel in place to monitor the children.
And so it's fair to say that the increase is not seeking to make profit, it's seeking to keep the program solvent.
Solvent, correct.
Any other questions?
Okay, so I'll move on to the preschool tuition rate increase. I'm recommending a rate increase of, for, of 3%. The drivers are the Unit A and Unit C salary increases in fiscal year 22 and 23. And here's a comparison. And again, it's the same, the same reasoning as to, we want to make sure that we've recouped at least the increases in the salaries, especially for this program. Because a lot of times the budget absorbs this, this is not a self-sustaining program. This is a program that is put in place so that there are peers for special needs students in a classroom setting. And this is only 3% because last year, we knew that there was going to be an increase and that the program was going to be running and that we were still paying these teachers. So we only took a 1% increasing, knowing that we, you know, we didn't know if the numbers would drop, so we only took a 1% increase last year.
Mike.
Uh, well, Pat, that was sort of my question, maybe. I, I, what I was going to ask right before you said that was, shouldn't, there's, there's always an increase, there's sort of a natural increase for preschool tuition rates. Sometimes it's a little higher, sometimes it's a little bit lower. But has it traditionally served as a driver for the Unit A and C salary increases or is that something new?
What do you mean as a driver? Do you mean, are we only increasing it because of the increases in the contracts?
That's, that's sort of what slide number four feels like it suggests, but maybe I'm misinterpreting that.
Well, it, it's difficult. It's really difficult to determine if that is truly the sole driver because if we have, if most of the students that we have in the program are special needs, then we're not going to receive a lot of tuition. So we're just trying to be thoughtful and look back at multiple years and try to see what the number is going to be as far as, you know, to cover the cost of the program every year. It's, it's still, it's very difficult to determine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I can only tell you, we don't know if there's gonna be three, three special needs kids in a classroom and five regular ed or whatever. We, we really don't know year to year. You know, i- it depends on, you know, the IEPs of the students. So um, we just have to look back at, at what was good in, in previous years, you know, if we were hitting the mark. And then now, this is where we are. Three percent was reasonable. Um, maybe four percent could have been um, something that we went with. But um, I think three percent is, is reasonable because we did one percent last year.
Got it. Alright, thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, um, the other, the other thing we have to remember is we're asked, we're being asked to set rates for fiscal year twenty-three. And we don't know what the union contract will settle in at for fiscal year twenty-three. That's
Right.
That's something we haven't, we haven't talked about. And it's, it, it becomes a a very difficult thing for Pat to, for Pat and her uh associates to try to project what the um, Unit A, Unit C increases will be. Not only for these kind of rates, but for the budget as well. They're gonna put together a budget, perhaps even before we're finished with negotiating with the teachers for next year, and that's gonna be uh, you know, i- they're trying to project, and they're trying to be conservative, I think, on, on this.
Right.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions on this? Alright. That it, Pat, for that presentation?
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alright, everyone. Alita, I have somebody trying to enter who's just on a cellphone, and I'm just not sure who it is. I'm not sure if you want to take a look at that.
I have no idea who it is either.
Oh, Amy, it's you?
Me, I'm trying to join audio from my cellphone because the audio on my
Okay, you're in, sister. Okay. Alright, let's move on to uh the substitute pay increase topic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your package, you have a memo from me uh indicating uh that we would, are asking for an increase in our substitute pay um, uh for our instructional assistants as well as our substitute teachers. And I've invited Ms. Anne Marie Storica, our Director of Human Resources, to speak on this topic. So Anne Marie, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, and I'm sorry that I seem to be coming down with laryngitis. This could be a little painful for you all. But thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about and to advocate for an increase in our daily rate for our day-to-day substitute teachers and instructional assistants. Superintendent Downing's memo in your packet um points out that our current rates, which are eighty-five dollars a day for teachers and seventy-five dollars a day for instructional assistance, has been in effect since January first of twenty-seventeen, so about five years. The superintendent's recommendation is to increase both groups, both the teachers and the instructional assistants daily rate to a hundred dollars a day, and for that increase to go into effect on January third. There were two primary reasons for requesting the increase. First is that minimum wage is increasing in January of twenty-twenty-two. And then again, the following January, January of twenty-twenty-three. Although teachers are exempt from minimum ma- minimum wage requirements, we feel that the voluntary compliance is the right thing to do. An increase to a hundred dollars a day would put us in compliance with the minimum wage increases. Both the one that's coming up in January uh next month and the one coming up in January of twenty-twenty-three. It also places our daily subrates near the top of what we consider our comparable districts. What they're paying, whereas now uh we're really in the middle of the pack. The second goal of the increase is to try to track more subs to our district. Uh, I don't want to suggest that this increase will solve that problem. The substitute shortage is um an issue for all districts, no matter what they pay, uh but it certainly wouldn't hurt. I wanted to point out that the recommendation is to put both sub-teachers and instructional assistants at the same rate, whereas now they're, they have different rates. That would give us flexibility to the principals, especially during the sub-s shortage, to place people where they're most needed on any given day. Uh, and it's consistent with the practice of most, but not all of the other districts, to pay them the same, the same rate. Something, you know, is not an easy job, but it's really essential to maintain consi- consistent instruction when our regular staff is out. And we're really grateful for the efforts of our substitute teachers. So we will be asking you to approve a pay rate of a hundred dollars a day for day-to-day substitute teachers and day-to-day substitute instructional assistants. And to have that be effective on January twentieth, uh January third of twenty-twenty-two. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may speak to that as well. Um, as, as we have been working with our, our faculty and staff around the complexities and challenges of frankly, just finding human beings to come into our schools to do the things we needed them to do. Cause we've all read the stories about the competitive workforces that are out there right now. And I think this is the right move for us to make. And the interchangeability of not just our uh instructional aid substitutes and our teacher substitutes, but our actual instructional aides in the building. It simplifies the complexities of what salary rates they get when instructional aid there's an employee actually covers for a teacher. And it just brings things all into a, a, I think, a cleaner net and provides us more flexibility in understanding how to place people during the day. Because I have to tell you, on a given day, you, you're gonna anticipate what your sub-sheet is when you go to bed. And when you wake up the next morning, our principals have a completely different sub-sheet in front of them and, and deficits and plans. So we just need that versatility, and that helps us achieve that.
I also would imagine that throughout the course of a day, one substitute could be subbing for a teacher, say at the high school, could be subbing for a teacher during one block and a
That's right.
The second, um, so it just seems like such a natural fit. Uh, Mike, I'm gonna go to you.
Yeah, I mean, if we haven't touched this since two thousand seventeen, that this is a long time coming. I am in full support of this. Um, so in that vein, I'm gonna move to approve the substitute rate increase to a hundred dollars per day for both teachers and instructional assistants effective January third, two thousand twenty-two.
So move.
Second that.
Yep.
So everyone, uh, as much as I appreciate your um, your move to do this, uh, I'm actually gonna ask Mike to, to rescind that motion only because I don't like to vote on something
The day we present.
after it's been introduced in the same meeting. Just as a matter of practice.
That is refreshing. Yeah, so I, I will fully retract this motion.
Mr. Harash, uh, you can blame me squarely for inappropriately putting action uh on that particular item. So you can, you, you can blame me for that there.
That's okay.
I have my list, Kirk. I have my, my blame list. Check. Um, Rich, is that okay? You seconded the motion. Do you um, accept the rescinding of such?
I actually moved it again, so um, yeah, it's all messed up, so.
Mr. Gleason, Mr. Gleason, do I need some help here?
No, no, Madam Chair. I was gonna use this as a teaching moment. So when Mr. Horish moved to make, he made a motion. It was seconded. It now becomes the ownership of the, of the body. So if Mr. Horish is inclined to withdraw his motion and Mr. Echol has no objection, then the, the motion is withdrawn with the assent of the body. So you have to ask if the body assents to that motion uh being withdrawn, and then we can move on, so.
Through, Joe, through a roll call?
No, just by assent, you know, just if there's anybody, you ask for any objections. If there's no objections, then the motion is considered withdrawn. If there are objections, then it would have to go to a roll call vote.
Thank you. So um, are there any objections from the body that this be taken back? We can continue discussion, but to just take the motion back. Seeing no objections.
You have an objection with Amy Cohen.
Amy, do you have a, an objection?
Well, I, I object because I think that this will pass today. I mean, I, I don't really see a reason to delay this any further personally, but.
Well, all, the only reason why I say so, i- I totally agree with you, but the only reason why I say so is that I think once we commit to ever vote on something in a meeting when it's introduced, I'd like to kind of uphold it, if that's okay. Even if, even if we're all in favor, I just think that the practice is a good one. And we can vote, we'll vote on the fifteenth and then we can, um, and then you want it to go into effect January twenty-fifth, you said, Kirk?
Uh, January third of twenty-twenty-two, right after the, uh, in, in the new calendar year.
So are there any objections? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to a little bit of discussion. Steve, did you want to ask a question?
I just, I just wanted to say welcome back Anne Marie. She's been uh, she's been out, I guess, and it's, it's nice to have her back among us.
Thank you very much, Steve. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Agreed. Thanks, Steve. I wonder, uh, Kirk, so we're talking here about fifteen to twenty-five dollars more per day, per sub. Is this going to impede the budget? Do you have any sense of how much this might be in addition?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I have sat with Ms. Maroni and we have looked at where we are with current expenditures. And we feel that we'll be able to absorb those costs safely due to uh retirements from last year and some, some other salaries we hired at lower rates. And so I think we will. Uh, plus, by virtue of the fact that we're not hiring as many substitutes, we can't find them. We have to have these extra coverages. Uh, that line item is not being expended uh the way it may have pre-COVID. So yes, we, we feel safely that we can make those uh adjustments.
Alright, everybody. So we will put this on the agenda for the next meeting to vote on all the above here in new business. So uh, if there are no other questions, we're gonna move on. We have no unfinished business. But finally, I feel like there should be a drumroll every time because you guys have waited so patiently for so long. We have our student representative report. And I will turn it over to Sonia and Dan. Thanks, guys, for being here.
Dan, do you wanna lead?
Sure, uh, can you guys all hear me? Alright, great. So first thing, I guess, just start off on a good note. We, as Christmas is coming up, we just started decorating the foyer of the building. So that's pretty cool. Uh, also, just a light overview of the pilot rollout of the online hall passes. Uh, we've got some responses coming in to get student feedback in a survey. So we'll probably be back in a later meeting with more information on that. Uh, on that note, I think I'll turn it over to Sonia.
Okay, um, yeah, last meeting, I talked about how we had our Powerpuff game and our pep rally coming up, and those went really well. We had a lot of student involvement. And those, um, the Powerpuff game had more attendance than ever before. Uh, and that was really exciting. And everyone was really, really, just like happy to be there, even though it was freezing. Um, there were a lot of people out there on the turf. Um, and unfortunately, the juniors won. But I'll let that slide. And um, yeah, it was, it was really awesome to have. Um, because we changed it this year to not just be girls. It was like any gender could sign up. Um, and um, that was just, I don't know, we changed it from powder puff to power puff to be less um, I don't know, old fashioned. Um, and then the next day, the pep rally was, it was also freezing, but there was also some really high excitement and people were like happy to be there. Um, out on the bleachers, which is different from how we usually do. But um, that was really exciting to have, like, all of the grades kind of competing against each other, but in good spirits. Um, and then another little update, our winter sports started this week. So we have a lot of tryouts happening this week, the um, with like hockey and basketball and everything. And the start of our no-cut sports is already underway, so. Um, and there's a lot of really good involvement there too. Um, do you have a question?
I, I, I'll wait till the answer, thank you.
Okay, um, and I also mentioned last week about the surveys. Um, not about the passes, but just about general student voice. Um, and we have continued to collect like a very overwhelming amount of responses. So um, me, Dan, and Dr. B have started to look into all of those. And we're kind of unpacking the student voices and seeing how we can lean to meeting some of the unheard needs of these students, which is really exciting. That's all.
Great, Kirk.
Sonia, can I jump in and just say that you and I met today and I shared with Dan that we're hoping to present some of the data
Yes.
from the student surveys. And so I'll be um, kind of coordinating with, with Dan and Sonia and reaching out to Superintendent Downing. Um, and to, to figure out how to not only just do an update, but actually do a presentation. Um, so that you get the data ahead of time. There's, uh, it's some really, really great stuff. So we're gonna be curating it and, but wanting to share that data and do more of a formal presentation um, at a, at a future's um, school committee meeting.
Yeah, there's some really um, strong voices that we're excited to share with you guys.
Kirk, did you want to jump in?
Uh, yeah, is, is it out of order to ask questions of our students, Madam Chair?
No.
Great. Um, I, I've just, I've been impressed with Sonia and Dan. As you guys know, I, I visit the high school on Wednesdays. And so we'd love an opportunity to check in with you guys and set up some student forums where I can interact with some students and do some more learning uh about the school system. So if, if we can find a time to meet on a Wednesday morning, I would love that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
That'd be awesome.
Great. Steve. I think you're on mute, yeah.
Okay, I have a, a question. When um, previous uh student representatives, uh, when they gave us a summary of activities, they would also include the uh um, elementary and uh junior hu- uh elementary and middle school programs. Anything that special was going on there. And I wondered if our, if our two current student representatives uh could be asked to start including that information for us.
Uh, Mary, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to before the, the students respond. And in my experience with school committees and student representatives, uh, what the high school students uh reported on was their environment, their school, rather than having to pick up the phone and talk to the different principals. And so I was really pleased um, that, that it had been a switch from feeling that our student representatives somehow were representing all the schools. When we have the principals who put out newsletters, um, which, you know, really, I would hope would come to all um, school committee members. I just feel as though it would be a, a burden to have our student representatives, um, remember back to high school and how busy everything is? You go to classes and there are extracurricular activities and it's like every moment, um, something's going on. And to, at, then to go to the principals or go to somebody in each of the schools and find out what's going on just seems unfair. And it seems a burden um, that I would rather not put on um, us, our student representatives. So we have a difference of opinion here.
I welcome anyone else to weigh in on this. If you have an opinion. May I call you Dr. B, which I completely appreciate that.
Absolutely, as a beekeeper as well, so it has multiple meanings. Uh, and I apologize for not asking to be recognized prior to, I got very excited. I, I, my excitement gets away from me. I, I want to, um, I wanna, I wanna just recognize the, the time that both Dan and Sonia are providing, you know, giving to this. And, and I, I do agree with Mary that it would be a, a really big ask for them to reach out to all of the other schools um, to provide updates where, you know, and I agree, in my experience, the, the the high school representative to um, school committee is really sharing the high school experience. And so I'd, I'd, I would advocate to preserve that for them.
I'd love to hear from Dan.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I think the only hard thing about doing that, representing also the middle school environment would be uh primarily that I go to the high school and I don't go to the middle school. So it's hard for me to represent a, a place that I don't go to.
And Sonia, did you want to also weigh in on that?
Yeah, I personally wouldn't feel comfortable speaking on their voice. Um, because I don't interact with any elementary or middle school students like on a regular basis. And talking to just a, like a principal or something wouldn't feel like I would be accurately representing how they are.
Thanks, Sonia. I do understand what Steve is saying because those presentations in the past were really interesting. But I recognize what Mary's saying as well, um that this, this is a big ask and it might be off-center. So Kirk, what do you think?
Well, I I and I also uh love the spirit of Mr. Rubenstein's request and and wanting to know more about those other systems. So I would be happy to bring that information forward from time to time when we have uh some of those feature things happening at our elementary and middle schools as well.
Oh, that might be a great solution. Is, does that seem to satisfy Steve? Maybe that's a good compromise. Okay, great. Thanks, guys. Um, any other questions with regard to the student report comments? Amy?
Yeah, I was wondering if you guys could give us a feeling about how the um test and stay program went this week with the the rollout and um, you know, what the feeling among the student population was.
Before you guys uh respond to that, can we quickly do a little vocab check here? Test and stay, daily COVID safety checks. Are these the same, different?
That's, that's what I meant. That's what I meant.
Yeah, so um Dr. Boynton, what it, what is the difference? Like, can you help us differentiate? Or Kirk?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh test and stay is a program for when we identify positive cases that we test close contacts that are unvaccinated so that they can stay in school. Weekly COVID safety checks are the broad strokes of just trying to find uh uh asymptomatic cases that may otherwise go undetected. So they're two completely different things. The weekly COVID safety checks have just begun, and and perhaps that's what Ms. Cohen is referring to.
That is exactly what I meant to say. Thank you so much for um correcting my vocabulary on that. I think I'm still struggling to learn the the proper terminology. That that's.
You're not alone. And I think that it used to be called pull-up, but now we're calling it that daily COVID safety check. So question, Sonia or Dan, do you wanna weigh in or let us know from the student perspective how that's going?
Um, from my perspective and my peers, I guess, we've had a lot more people actually going and getting like tested this past Tuesday. I remember the last time, there was a little bit of confusion of like getting there. But um we, by Dr. B gave me this stat, but by second lunch um yesterday, yeah, we had over um like the amount of COVID tests like that had been done from the previous previous time. I didn't really say that very well, but we had a lot more this time than last. Uh of people actually.
Dan, do you wanna add to that at all? Dan, do you wanna add to that at all? Is there anything, Sonia, or is that good?
Almost it.
Okay, thanks. Um so Dr. Boynton or Kirk, just to clarify, high school students are um having these daily checks whenever they have long block. Uh Dr. Boynton, can you clarify a little bit?
It's long block on Tuesday. So every Tuesday, um the are the the nurses set up in the lower gym. And during long blocks, so we have four lunches and students, you know, we're sending out reminders. I think a lot of it is just reminders, having it become part of a routine. So it's, it's really, it's been, it's brand new. So we saw uh, you know, just about a hundred the first week that we that we did the um the the, I think it's Kirk, correct me, it's regular, no, it's regular COVID safety checks. Uh so and so it's every Tuesday long block. So we had just about a hundred. We had over like close to a hundred and fifty today um on Tuesday. So it's just becoming part of routine. As you have lunch, you can do it before lunch or after lunch. We're sending out reminders uh to families and direct to students um prior to. So uh you know, not only in my newsletter, but direct message to to students. And our video production uh class is creating a PSA around the um the regular or frequent um COVID safety checks and becoming part of routine, either before before they have lunch, before they get in the line, or after they have lunch, um pop to the lower gym. And it really is about a a forty-five second procedure. And and Dan and Sonia, I'm not sure if either one of you have undergone that and can speak to that. It's pretty easy. You check in, give your name, go to one of the four or five tables um that are um divided by grade. And then it's a si- a simple swab and a a pop in a in a a test tube essentially.
Yeah, it takes about a minute and then you can go back to lunch. Um yeah, and I was just gonna mention the broadcast there working on that PSA and it's I'm excited for.
Alright, great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank, thank you for that. I I I know it's a little redundant because we talked about it during the superintendent's update, but I just wanted to hear from the students.
Alright, Sonia and Dan, thanks so much for your time. If you want to jump off, please feel free. We'll see you next time. Alright, everyone, we're gonna move on to our subcommittee reports. And I know that uh just for the public's benefit here, not a, not all the subcommittees meet every um two weeks. We meet once a month. And so if you do not have a report, please feel free to just say that. Uh but let's start with our budget and warrant subcommittee. Mr. Rubenstein?
We have nothing really to report, but I just wanted to let anyone who's interested know that we will have a budget and warrant committee meeting at seven thirty on Monday, the thirteenth of December.
Great. And Ms. Cohen for our communications subcommittee.
Yeah, thank you. We met last night. Um uh and we invited the superintendent to attend. Uh and we had a nice, long fruitful discussion about a communication-related survey that we will be developing in collaboration with the superintendent. Um so we, we spent some time parsing out what it might look like. And we're gonna take the next meeting to review um an example of a survey that he has used in the past and see if we have many, if we can add any further recommendations to it. And also um define, further define the purpose of of what we seek to learn through such a survey. Um, the other thing that our subcommittee spent some time discussing and that I'd like to bring forth before the committee is um one of, it's related to a goal that we set for ourselves. And the goal was to make a recommendation um to ask school committee members to take turns hosting office hours prior to meetings. Um this, w- we still have some work to do in the subcommittee to um kind of hash out the details related to this, but we felt that this was an important measure that we could take to create more opportunities to engage with our constituents, with our community members, and offer additional opportunities outside of public comment for interested members of our community to have a conversation with us. Um, so let me just pull up my notes here. Excuse me while I do that. Um so what we thought was it might look something like um asking each member to sign up to be present for an hour before each meeting twice a year. So each member, we wouldn't be, obviously, it wouldn't be a requirement, but this would be something that would be encouraged of each school committee member. Um and we would want there to be at least two school committee members so that there's never just one person present. But we would never want any more than four, so that we would avoid a quorum. Um, this would be something that members of the public could access with a Zoom link without pre-registration. And before each of these office hours, if that's what we end up calling them, we would declare, we'd make sure that the purpose was clear. Um what we discussed last night was it could look something like telling people uh or inviting people to tell us what they'd like, tell us what they'd like to, what they wish, but make sure that there's an understanding that we are not at liberty to discuss personnel matters. Um individual employee matters and that, you know, we can't guarantee that we would be available to answer every question. But we thought it would be an important way to build some trust equity with community and listen um to what they're, to what feedback they may have to offer before our business meeting begins. So this was something that our subcommittee has been talking around. Um and we wanted to bring it before the full committee. Mike and Sharon, if you have anything to add, if I've missed anything, please feel free to jump in.
I thought that was great, Amy. Thank you.
Alright, is that the end of your report, Amy?
It is. I think that our goal would be to bring a more formal um recommendation or um a vote or approval. I'm not sure what the appropriate next step is, but um at at the next, after our next meeting. Yes, Mike?
Um do I have permission to have the floor?
Of course, yes.
Um, yeah, this might be something we could bring up as a future agenda item. I know that that's coming up in our in our agenda. Um but you know, maybe maybe formally bringing this recommendation up and putting it towards a vote um would be the right move.
Yeah, just, you just tell us what date you're ready to bring it forth. And you don't need to tell us now.
Yeah, our our subcommittee is gonna be meeting again on um December not in the minutes. And it's, it's, I think it's December seventeenth. So we wouldn't be prepared to have it as a future agenda item until after that. Do you agree, Mike and Sharon? Yeah.
Yeah, more than likely. Um I think I have it down for the twentieth. I have it written down as the twentieth. Um so, so yeah, certainly not before then.
So if we could put this on the planner for January as an agenda item, I think our subcommittee would be prepared to have uh, you know, something written to share with the full committee.
You got it.
Thanks.
Um, policy, I think, is, that was the end, right, Amy? So personnel, uh Mary, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to make a point of order that um according to our, um I think it's protocols, that we would, if we go past nine o'clock, um that we would take a vote that we would want to go pass. Now, I'm not asking to do that. I'm just pointing out that um that it looks as if with the agenda, if everyone is very concise, it won't be much longer than nine o'clock. But I just wanted to remind all of us that that is part of our our protocol and that any one of us could ask for a vote at this point to continue. And and I'm not doing that. I'm just pointing out that as a point of order, we should get in the practice of at nine o'clock, making sure that everybody does want to continue. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Alright, so if anybody wants to call for that vote, I, it looks like we might be done faster than not. So let's just storm ahead here. Uh the personnel subcommittee doesn't really have anything um significant to report. Uh we are continuing on with uh the business of superintendent evaluation and various elements of the trainings that we committed to. Um policy subcommittee, Karen is not here tonight, but um they, the policy subcommittee was supposed to meet tonight. We had to reschedule, so there's really no report there. Um let's move over to the audit advisory. Rich, do you have anything there?
No report, just no part.
Alright, great. And then to Sharon for Dear J.
Dear J has no report.
Great. And that um item that we discussed last meeting is on the agenda for a future meeting. Um Alita?
Did we forget, did we forget the school building committee?
You you did. I was just waiting for a time to just chime in at the end of this, so that's okay.
I'm so sorry.
Just go ahead, keep going. Don't worry about me. I'll catch you at the back end. Don't worry about it.
Alright.
Right, right, Mary. So go to Mary, go to swing back to me.
Thanks, Alita. Um so the regional agreement amendment advisory committee, the R-triple-A-C, Mary?
That's a, that's right. We we met again last month. Oh, wait a second, that was last night. Um and um so the and as you know, we only have one Lancaster member, and that's Sharon. And Sharon had a conflict last night. She couldn't be in two places at the same time. So that left us with zero, no Lancaster members. And the committee, we really, we really missed you, Sharon. And we missed your representation of Lancaster. And the and the R-A-A-A-C um asked me to again implore and to reach out and do whatever I could. So to Lancaster to say that we need someone from town as well as we need a citizen at large because it Lancaster counts. And and we really want, so I'm I'm doing some of that and I have done um some of that. But I'm bringing up again in case anyone hears this and they think she keeps saying that, maybe I should. And I would say to you, yes, you should. Um let me know or or let Leah, you could let Sharon know. Um we would be so happy and 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 to catch you up, too. Um we will meet again on twelve eight, seven to eight fifteen. And um and and that's it for for R-A-A-A-C.
Very good. Uh let's move on to our CPAC parent advice, uh CPAC. And Mr. Collins, anything new?
Uh yeah, CPAC has had a few good presentations recently. Um they had one tonight, actually. And they got a few more planned later in the month. Um, the ones coming up are they've got a virtual social and a Q and A with superintendent. Um so the CPAC social is on the seventh and the Q and A with Mr. Downing is on the thirteenth. Uh you can find the links on the website. Uh go to the district website, families tab, find CPAC and all the all the information is right there. All I got.
Thanks, Brett. And now, it's because I wanted to save the best for last.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Building committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um as I mentioned at the last school committee meeting, our uh November meeting was postponed until December because we wanted to allow our design designer selection subcommittee to uh parse through the seven applicants that had submitted their responses to our request for services. Uh just to let the committee know, yesterday on the thirtieth of November, eight thirty in the morning, the MSBA's designer selection panel met to review our applications. And I'm happy to report that our superintendent has some very interesting information for us in regards to what transpired yesterday. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Gleason. Um yes, the the subcommittee did meet with the MSBA committee at large. Uh that was uh fifteen people uh for that meeting, along with myself, Ken Farmer and Pat Morone is our representatives. And in the end, we examined all the applicants and there were two applicants that really rose, separated themselves from the pool of applicants uh that and and I I wanna say all seven of the architectural firms that came forward uh had outstanding reputations and awards. These two firms, we just felt really led to uh experiences working with regional school systems and had uh some strong educational planning uh devices to them that we think are gonna be very beneficial to us. And plus, they equipped their teams with uh um the the people on staff that are well-known to be high performers in their industry. So those two firms are Drummy Rosane Anderson Incorporated and Kessel Booze Associates Incorporated. They will be advanced to the interviews uh for the MSBA on December fourteenth, at which point on that day, uh one will be selected to enter into uh contract negotiations uh for selection. So thank you, Attorney Gleason.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And uh as I mentioned, I I don't, I mentioned it, Madam Chairman, our next meeting is scheduled for December seventh at seven PM. And that's all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, everybody, for those subcommittee reports. Our last item on the agenda here is items for the next agenda. So if anybody has anything that they So if anybody has anything that they'd like to add, I can actually, um, share very quickly the planning calendar. And you can see the twelve fifteen meeting here has some items on it. Mary, go ahead.
Well, personnel, we would be doing a, a brief presentation on the, um, survey.
I got, I have that here.
Oh, good, good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kirk.
Madam Chair, um, there's a request and also even it came up just in our conversation earlier in, in budget around, uh, distribution of ESSER funds. So I think it'd be worthy to update the committee. Looking at our agenda, I'll leave it to you if you want to do that in December or, uh, um, I, I think you highlighted a sentence that might say it.
Hey, yes, indeed. We have.
My screen is so small, I can't see anything. Okay, good.
It's on there.
And, and if the agenda is, is gets to the point where we need to manage that, we could certainly do that at our first meeting in January as well. So.
Okeydoke, no problem. Uh, so I cannot see everybody. So if you have something that you want to add or say, please just jump in.
I'm looking around. I don't see any hands.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. So everyone, it appears we are at that, uh, popular time of night. The last item on the agenda is, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn. I don't know who said it first.
I did.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
And I'm always first when that, when it comes to that.
Good thing. All right, everybody, I vote yes. Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
All right. Um, Pat, I feel like we might have left you hanging there. Did you have something to add? Oh, you're just saying goodbye.